One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the Exeter Town Council regular meeting Monday, May fifth, two thousand twenty-five. The order with the clerk, we state the rule.
Dan Patterson?
Here.
Ray Morrison?
Here.
Diane Allen?
Here.
Olivia De Francisco?
Here.
Michelle Ellis?
Here.
Okay, next up, acknowledgements and announcements. A, annual dog licensing is April first to June first at six dollars. After June first, it's six dollars per license plus a twenty-five dollar late fee for license. And a town at the clerk's office. Annual shelter, all online. For more information, visit the town's webpage. Item D, Exeter Fire District's annual budget meeting is Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven P M. at the Exeter West Greenwich Junior Senior High School Auditorium, nine thirty, Deuce Neck Hill Road, West Greenwich, Rhode Island. Item C is the annual financial town meeting is Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven P M. at the Exeter West Greenwich Junior Senior High School Auditorium, nine thirty, Deuce Neck Hill Road, West Greenwich, Rhode Island. Item D is Department of Social Services, two thousand twenty-five Rover's Give Back, a program providing access to no-cost produce and dairy to families, seniors, and individuals facing food insecurity in our community and operating out of the Exeter Chapel tentatively, alternating Fridays, June through September. Applications are available to the town clerk's office and must be returned by May thirty-first. And Cal, you had nothing more to add?
I did. Dan, thank you. This morning, it came to the council's attention that our planner, Bill Di Pasquale, had received a communication from the supervising planner of the Department of Administration, that's Division of Statewide Planning. And there's a short message here, and I'd like to share it with all of you and anyone who cares about what's happening, because this, this is good news. Bill, I reviewed the addenda revisions document for state approval, which you had sent to us yesterday, and the proposed revisions you have drafted are sufficient to attain state approval for the Town of Exeter Comprehensive Plan, ten-year update. We will begin, we will begin drafting a state approval letter for the Town of Exeter pending final receipt of the revised plan from your office. Nice job and congratulations on all the hard work that went into updating this plan. This is a long-range plan that the Town of Exeter can be very proud of. Long time coming. Last time we had an approved plan was in two thousand nine, and these approved plans are significant. And significant, oh, I am reading.
This town did it.
He is one of them.
Thank you.
And not only did statewide, you know, statewide DOT commend Bill for his work, but I know that we all expressed our appreciation to his guidance through this process that has provided state approval. I just read the letter. State approval. And then he walked in as if, you know, a dramatic.
It's actually late, so.
Thank you again, Bill.
Thank you all. Thanks for the town. Congratulations to the town.
Yeah, also, the parade is the twenty-fourth, and it's not the agenda, but we hope y'all come.
Yeah, but it's not. It's the twenty-fifth. Which is Sunday. Well, there is a communication that says that. I'm sorry, Diane, I don't need to do that. But I read that, and I said, but no people, it's Sunday, the twenty-fifth, and I know I saw something that gave the wrong information. So, so, at one o'clock, Sunday, the twenty-fifth. I know, because it said four. No, no, it's okay. Anyway, sorry. Have we disrupted you enough, Dan?
Yep.
I won't be in the parade on the twenty-fifth, because it's my fortieth wedding.
Oh, congratulations. Congratulations.
Number four, approval of the agenda order under number seven, Republican hearings. I'm going to make a motion to take item B, public entertainment license application to the truck pulls, and I'm going to move that in front of A, because that's going to be short and sweet. Get them right out of here. That's my motion.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's see. Approved the consent agenda, communications, do you have any, Cal?
These boys have to do it. I actually do have this, Bill, one and eleven.
One and eleven?
One and eleven.
Are you?
Number one, that, thank you.
Are you?
I'll say.
Right?
No.
Everybody who's here for the meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
Oh, I'll pull the bill sheet.
Okay, bill sheet. You got to vote on that separately, okay?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as a amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is?
Motion to approve the bill sheet.
Oh, motion to approve the bill sheet.
I'll make the motion, do.
I'll second it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number six, vacancies and appointments. Person aboard. Reinforcements. Appointments. Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee members, three needed to serve four-year term beginning date of appointment. Board of Tax Assessment Review Member to serve unexpired term ending May sixth, two thousand twenty-seven. Board of Tax Assessment Review Alternate Member to serve three-year term beginning date of appointment. Just give me the post, huh? Is that on the webpage too, if I can?
Yes.
Okay.
Does it give you a little description of?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Item D, expiring terms. Elizabeth Bosso, Rennel's Chair of Trust Committee expires May seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Based on her letter of interest, I'll move to reappoint.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearings, we're going to do B first. Get that gentleman out of here, he's going to sit there for a while. Item B is a public entertainment license application. Ronald Mosotic, I hope I said it right, applicant on behalf of the Southern Ringing Truck Pullers Association, all truck pulls with food vendors from nine A M. to seven P M. On the northern portion of Town Road, Rennel's Field, located on South Road, Exeter, Rhode Island, on Saturday, day seventeen, two thousand twenty-five. Rain date is Sunday, May eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. Saturday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Rain date, Sunday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And Saturday, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, with a rain date of Sunday, October twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. The motion of the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An applicant here to come up and speak. I love your victim. Just, just give your name for a link for the record, please.
Ronald Mosotic.
Yep.
President of Southern England Truck Pullers, maybe this year. Basically going to be doing the same thing that we've done every year, which is using the track that has been provided to us by the Town of Exeter and maintaining the grounds which have been asked by us. Other than that, is nothing new, and we're trying something new this year with a camera at the gate to try and catch people that are speeding off and peeling out, because we know that is an issue with the neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the council, or?
No, it's, was, no, but you're going to ask if there's anyone else here.
Oh, yeah. Anybody in the audience want to speak in regards to this? Rob, you got anything to say? You're the one to charge over there.
Well, the track is as is, as it's been in the past. We will not be moving it until after this event, because there's a four-month gap that gives me plenty of time to make the adjustments needed. So it's good to go.
Just as long as we're talking about that, so we knew that there are issues there, that is that going to continue to allow these folks to?
Absolutely.
No? Okay.
Your mention, and I'm glad that was included. We talked about that.
Huge deal.
Moved the thing over.
Before I for it, then, we definitely.
Good. All right. Multiple, uh, multiple closing hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're going to consider.
Thank you.
And move to, move to approve the application presentation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Good night, be safe.
Thank you.
Good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have fun.
Okay, next is item A, under public hearings, proposed amendments to the Exeter Code ordinances, Appendix A, zoning. Article one, administrative procedures, section one point two, definitions, section one point two point three four, revise farm. Section one point two point three five, revise farm brewery. Section one point two point three five A, add farm cafe. Section one point two point three five B, add farm cafe kitchens. Article two is zoning district use regulations. Section two point four, zoning use table. Section two point four point one point sixty A, revise farm breweries. Section two point four point one point sixty B, add farm cafe, put those, add numbers fifteen and sixteen. Article two, zoning district use regulations, section two point four, zoning use table, update classifications of permitted uses not allowed, and those permitted via special use permit in accordance with recent zoning legislation to that level of legislature. Motion of the public hearing.
Second. I'll second with a comment, please, before we begin. As you presented this to us, Dan, or as it was presented to us by our planner, this just simply represents a, a, a huge amount of work that's been done on this, and I have, I have this much paperwork to indicate that it's been a really ongoing process. And I just think we all, all recognize, this was a huge undertaking, and I thank you, I think we all do. All right, that's not enough.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I guess, Bill, you want to speak first?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. My name is Bill Di Pasquale. I'm a town planner, honorable members of the town council, good evening tonight, and the fine folks and residents of the Town of Exeter. So before you tonight, and the public, will be consideration of an ordinance amendment to, as, as you well articulated, the use table to conform with recent zoning laws passed by the legislature, particularly in regard to special use permits. The second action as part of this ordinance is also to include a new definition for a farm cafe in an actual use code to allow a farm cafe in certain circumstances. And that would be amendment to Appendix A, Article two, zoning section two point four. And I know it's sometimes difficult for people to understand, but the ordinance and the code ordinances is one document with two appendices, and they all have to be looked at together. It can't be just looked at one element and not looked at, you know, at all the other sections. So this town council, the planning board, for almost two years now, have been working to have the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan comply with what we seem is ever-changing Rhode Island general laws on all issues of land use and subdivision. These changes are the most I've seen since the eighties, really is re-rich in both the land development regs, the zoning regs, regulations, state law, and the comprehensive plan laws. So how are we going to stop this tonight is? So in the presentation, it's going to be broken into the reconciliation of the myriad of zone changes required by our own general law, and those proposed by others, that in this particular case being the farm cafe. We will go through tonight the memorandum that you have in front of you. One is dated March twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and it's really a cover and a synopsis, easy for you to take a look at the zoning uses changes to the table and the farm cafe actually as amalgamated into one document, because essentially that's what we need. The second is March eleventh, twenty twenty-five memorandum, which is the travel and planning board consideration. So this is where Councilman Ellis kind of describes that this has been ongoing for quite a while, trying to take the farm cafe legislation that was presented by an exeter business owner and making sure that it conforms to not only our zoning regulations, but our, but our now state-approved comprehensive plan, and making sure that the business has equal footing with the commercial businesses that also, you know, contribute to your tax base here. So what we'll be doing here is we'll be following both of these memoranda as we, as we move forward. So section one is the special use permit. It's the proposed changes. Now, I wish I could report to you, this is the end-all and be-all, but it isn't. This is just the beginning. So what is in front of you now is an interim measure. It provides a town with the necessary time to establish precise and measurable objective criteria. And this is the important part. You need to have specific measurable and precise objective criteria for all two hundred and twenty-eight special uses that you have in your zoning code. Two hundred and twenty-eight. I don't know at the end of this ordinance, if it ends up being like, you know, the largest ordinance you'll ever see, but I think a lot of towns are grappling with how we separate these uses and address the specific and objective criteria. So I guess the next question is, well, what if we don't? And why change it? Well, amended state law. Let's read it together. It's forty-five dash twenty-four dash forty-two. Look at the highlighted areas.
Can you give it that way, Phil?
Right there. Forty-five, twenty-four, forty-two. Let me highlight. Establish specific and objective criteria for the issuance of each type of use category of special use permit, which criteria shall be in conformance with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance of the city of town. However, in no case shall any specific or objective criteria for a special use permit include a determination of consistency with the comprehensive plan, something we relied on in the past with special use permits. So just for the crowd to understand, there's a yes allowed in a certain district, no, not allowed in a certain district, and a kind of maybe. So, so it's a conditional approval of a special use permit, conditioned upon consistent, in the old days, consistency with the surrounding area, consistency with the comprehensive plan, some other performance data, like maybe trip generation. No longer can you use that as a reason for denial on a special use permit. You can't say that this particular use is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, what we did before, or it's, it's, it's not in keeping with the general characteristics of the surrounding area. Too subjective. They don't, no more. Hold on. So what happens if we don't do it? Let's look at the next paragraph. If an ordinance does not expressly provide for specific and objective criteria for the issuance of a category of special use permit, such as category shall be deemed a permitted use. So if I have a special use permit, I don't have the objective criteria, it's permitted. Okay, so, so you can't understand that in the special use permit, usually what went along with that is a series of conditions and stipulations that were tailored to that specific use. For instance, there could have been a specific use that absolutely is fine, because there's really no residential around them, they're in the middle of, you know, an area that is consistent land use, or that same use plucked in somewhere else, maybe you have a residential made a repine. So maybe you have different performance criteria. I'm going to give you one example. Everyone knows fast food coffee, right? I'm not going to say the word, but of course. If that's placed in an area of light industrial, and then it happens to back up against an open space property, there's not necessarily an issue of noise with a drive-through. Can I take your order? If backed up to a residential neighborhood, maybe twenty-four or seven, can I take your order, is an issue. So, so that's where the special use permit would be able to look at each individual use relative to the characteristics of the surrounding area. That no longer is the case, so until we have time to go through these two hundred and twenty-eight uses and categorize them and put some standards together, you have an open book for approvals. And that's not something I think was going to, well, I know, I'm not going to say think, would be consistent with the comprehensive plan that we have now that's approved by the state of Rhode Island and the, and, and the town residents and the town council. That's why we're doing this. This will give us some time to take a breath and, and put some objective standards together. So let's move on. So I'm going to have everyone look at the memorandum at this point, because it's probably going to be a lot easier to follow the nature of the improvements, I mean, the amendments. So on the proposed amendments, code ordinance is at page seven. Article one.
March eleven or March twelve?
It is. March twelfth, which is the cover letter, and the cover letter is just a summation of what the amendments are. It's the quickest way to look at the amendments. And that's what was advertised. So we start off with the definitions, section one point two, and we say that we have a farm definition, a five acres of more land, which is together with the principal and accessory buildings, actively devoted to agriculture or horticultural production, and operated by an individual partnership, a corporation that filed with U.S. Internal Revenue Service on ten forty, Schedule F, the Internal Revenue Service has the state of Rhode Island farm tax number, and has earned at least twenty-five hundred dollars of gross income on farm products and, and either receiving these. So some of these were minor tweaks to update with the current laws. The next one would be a change to the farm brewery. And you can see that the farm brewery had some minor modifications to allow for the farm cafe that we're going to introduce later on. I'm not going to address this now, we'll address, address that separately. And then we add another definition for what a farm cafe is. Again, we're, we're going to do that at a different time, and then what a farm cafe kitchen is. And it's important, because we restrict the size of the kitchen so that it doesn't become primary use. Just, let's put that in the parking lot for now, and let's get to the meat and potatoes of the use categories. So let's go to the next page, and we're going to be section two point far entitled zoning use table. And you can see now that each actual use here is that with a special use permit is going to be either yes or a no. And again, this is interim until we have something up to begin with, that we can actually create objective criteria for each one of these use categories, or at least categorize them into a use category that, that we can apply objective criteria. I don't know in the queue how long that's going to take. I'll just be honest with you, it's, it's a monumental task, but we'll get on it.
You have a large staff working on this?
I do.
I'm T. that's it.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Me, myself, and I.
Yeah, I know.
So I, I just, to this, Mr. President, do you want me to go through each, in every actual use code, or did the town council look at these actual use codes and want to bring some up for discussion, for yes, no, indifferent?
Well, that was one of the things when I got into this bill, and, because they were grouped together to tune a public hearing, and like this section here, I want to have continue this part till next month, so everybody can go through this and write all their notes down, but I want to move ahead with his farm brewery and get that out of the way tonight.
I mean, I'd suggest that you could do both. I think the danger of putting off the uses is that if I were someone else, I'd be filing tomorrow for every use that's in here on a special use permit. So the further you wait, I can't, I can't stop the land use to come in here that you don't necessarily want, because we can't protect you in terms of special use permit. This is not something that we created. This is something that's been outstanding, and we dodged a bullet. We had one applicant that come in on this special use permit, and they were very, very good working with the town, and they were able to agree with a lot of the things that were good for the town, but if they wanted to press the issue and say, the heck with you, the town wouldn't get anything.
Because like when you, like some of the stuff, a lot of it, and. Because a lot of the, basically all the land that's armed in Exeter is all under, usually RU four, RU three, and, I mean, like sale lumber, building materials, hardware, grain or feed.
What number, can you go by actual?
Number twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Sale lumber, building materials, hardware, grain or feed, and RU two, three, four, and CR five, they're all prohibited. It's a no.
Twenty-four is not underlined, it's not changed. Only the underlines are changed.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, that's, I think, where, yeah.
Only the underlines are changed.
It's, so that hasn't changed, it's always been that way. So every farm that sells any of its town's vital items, so has been, and I can think of a couple that have some of this.
Yeah, I mean, this, the intent here is not really to look at what you already have here, which is, you're right, it deserves a lot more attention. The planning board at least twice have looked at a draft change to this entire table, including updated uses. Again, that, that is, you know, a task that would have to be advertised differently, and then we'd have to go through the actual use code to update that, which is also, you know, on our plate, and we've done some draft. But this is only for those uses that actually have an S with it together. I don't disagree that a lot of these uses shouldn't be updated. I mean, you have a public telephone booth still in here.
That, that's what caught my eye right off the bat.
Yeah, and you've got a bunch of them, and, and it's not wrong, but we, we have, in my office, I have a draft change of all the uses to update them, and that's, again, that's going to be for a whole other set of public hearings. You know, you got to, to me, you got to triage things first.
Because like another one I'm going to pull out is number thirty-eight, two family farm structures. Three, four, and CR five is now a no. I know before, in certain areas in town, they've gone to the zoning inspector to give special use permit. And you, I know one, one instance, it was for affordable housing. You won't be able to do that anymore if, if this is passed.
Right, so, so if this is passed, the special use terms either turn to a no, or you can change it as a council to say yes. But don't forget, once you change it to yes, there ain't, there's no going back to a special use permit.
That would be, that would take one to do that versus what, what's it take for the council to change it to a special use permit?
Correct. For instance, if you wanted to take line item thirty-eight, and you wanted to change one of these to a yes, you could do it tonight. You go specifically that, that's what this power of this board is. So each line item could be addressed as we agree with it, or we change it. You can absolutely change it tonight, absolutely you can.
Well, that's one that we want to change, and.
What do you want to change it to, Dan?
Well, before it was a special use permit. Number thirty-eight, look across the line, and now it's a no. Because I know in the past, anytime someone weren't going to do a duplex, they would have to go get a, go get a special use permit. And it was done across the street, and it was for half of that for humanity, so they did duplexes, no. I mean, there's one of these. It's funny, just getting digesting this bill, it's just like, why was it done all at once?
Why was it done at once? Because it's been.
Grouped together, not done all at once, but I mean.
It's all done at once.
I was kind of hoping it would be separate.
It's all special use permits, though, I mean, quite frankly, this should have been done last January. done last January.
Once adopted, can we address some individual items if we find that maybe they should be revised, reconsidered?
You can do it, you can do it tonight, you can do it anytime, you can, you can do each individual one by line item. It really is up to you folks. You can deny, you can just keep it as is.
I...
But, but be careful what you wish for.
Well, yeah, see, my, my feeling is that you, you've extensively gone through this to protect the town to some extent, am I right?
To the entire extent. My job is to protect the town. Now, it's not, it's to give us a little time to digest this and re-plan it.
Which might mean that after you've digested, you may reconsider some of these no's, is that...
I, I think all of them, there's two hundred and twenty to go through, so I think the, the mechanism or, or the town council could go through this themselves and, and change these to yeses. And you'll have a yes, I mean, there's, if that's what the town council wants to do, we certainly can do that. We do it tonight. If there's one in here that's particularly troublesome, you can go from a, a special use permit to a yes. If that's a by right, that's by right. Go to the building per, uh, office and you get a permit. Which may be okay, may not be okay, I, you know, depends on the situation.
Now, I got a question, there's something in here for the overlay, the farm overlay district, that's all.
That's the no.
No, that's already been scheduled for a public hearing?
Correct.
Would it fall under the old rules or the new?
So the farm overlay district is, it sits on top of the underlying zoning district. So it adds supplemental rights, doesn't take rights away.
But there's still, it's already been, the applications in.
Yes.
Did that application fall under these old ones or the new ones?
It would be adding more liberal uses than this. They'd be able to do more with the farm overlay district than less, right? It gives it more, so on an overlay district, you can do two things. You can make it more restrictive. So for instance, not groundwater, if there's a resource that needs to be protected, you can make it more restrictive in terms of environment. On the land use side, you could also make it less restrictive. So the proposed farm overlay district would allow more uses than allowed by this ordinance. But yes, it would sit on top of whatever the uses are allowing in that particular district. This will change, so any district you're in, the underlying district, this will change it from just being upfront. It's gonna change it from special use to either no or yes. So there's three options. There is, there's no, yes, and then by some time. Now, it could be that you go through some of these and you say, "Okay, tonight we can say that, you know, this is a by right use, we're okay with it." That's, or next month or whatever you do it, you can, you can pick and choose what you wanna keep. But don't forget, there are two hundred and twenty-eight of them, so...
I think I was in here a year and a half ago, we started going through that.
Yeah, so I don't know which ones that, you know, if you want time to pick out certain ones that you...
Like I said, the last month, being with the budget, collecting bargaining, and then this, and I'm like, you just can't keep up with them.
Yeah.
I know what you're doing up there, so...
Oh, I'm just, yeah, no, just not enough bandwidth, but it's law, so ultimately, you gotta do it. Just like when we came with the comp plan, wasn't done. That was done, the zoning, remember the eleventh hour we were meeting on the zone changes with the state of Rhode Island? Uh, we had to make those, uh, land development rights. The, the further you go into the new regulations without any protection, the higher the chances someone's going to take advantage of it. And you'll have that land use for a long time because it runs with the property. I know there was a lot of, one of the, you know, applications we had, there was a lot of, of consternation on unified development for the expansion in the light industrial district. And we had, you know, a planning board that was, you know, very tight, a three to two vote, because there was a special use permit, but, you know, they weren't crazy about it. But, you know, we got concessions. So without any kind of protections, that would come in as a by right use, which may be something that the town wants in certain circumstances. For instance, if you want to support housing and you feel like that is your, you know, something that is positive within the comp plan that you should, you don't make that ten percent, then you could make two-family by right. That's really up to the town council.
Cause what, what is the other one I saw here?
Okay, that, Bill, was there, was there a reason that you thought we should probably make this adjustment, that we could then readjust if we need to, is that...
Yes, because in my forty years of doing this, the special use criteria and the, and the conditional permit, which a special use permit is, is a very, very good mechanism to look at specific conditions. So let's take the two families. A two-family on a lot that's conforming, that is, is maybe on an arterial roadway, the special use permit would look at the arterial roadway, they look at the extenuating, uh, conditions around and say, "That's a good, that's a good spot for two families." In the middle of a plat with all single-family homes and maybe it doesn't have the same frontage or some similar frontage, it may not be necessarily consistent with that plat. So the reason is, I, I'm, I'm not a fortune teller and I can't tell whether or not one of these uses, um, could be afforded a special use permit, um, um, review versus just saying yes, by right, it's allowed. Uh, the review is going there, that that conditional, um, assessment of the locality is not an assessment you can do anymore. So you may have a condition where you have a use that's really obtuse relative to its surroundings. And, and that is the reason, because, you know, I, it's very difficult for me to, now what I was planning to do was triage the category of uses to address special use permits in a way that we get some criteria in the most difficult si- situations. And that would be, um, fast food restaurants, things that could pose a lot of nuisance to neighboring community, uh, to neighbors, um, operations, junkyards. I mean, all these things, if you change it, with special wood processing, all these things that are in here, that could be a nuisance. If we had some objective criteria on that, you could just reinstall the special use permit and then add criteria to it. And at least you, the public would have a fighting chance in a public hearing to address that particular use. But you bring up any one of these noxious uses, you know, if located in this, in, in an area that is consistent with local zoning, might be okay. But within a residentially zoned property, which the pound, quite frankly, is like eighty percent residential, um, it could be a, a problem forever, it runs with the property.
I'll tell you, the number forty-one caught my eye.
Wood processing, yep.
Because you changed it from no on RU two, RU three, and then it's yes on RU four and RU five. How about if there's an undersized, pre-existing lot on RU four or RU five? So it brings this, you think, oh, the bigger lot, so you can allow wood processing, but it's not a bigger lot, it's a substandard lot in those zoning areas, but it has a wood processing.
Got it. That's a good point. No, you would have...
Because that's exactly what's happening in my neighborhood.
Okay.
So you're, you're having considerations for this, for what happens in that circumstance.
Then they go there. So that is the hard thing. So the special use permit would say, "Okay, this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, so while wood processing could be a conditional use, the lot is undersized in this condition, no." In this case, it's yes, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, if it's a yes in here, it's a yes. But we don't have...
I would like to change to no in an RU four then.
You can change no, and, you know, the thinking that the planning, and the planning board looked at both of these, uh, along with my guidance, was the idea was that these larger lots could accommodate wood processing.
Absolutely, if it's a larger lot.
Yeah. But again, we're, we're, we're trying to get a perfect solution to an imperfect ordinance. And you're not gonna get there tonight. I guarantee you, you're not gonna get there tonight.
Absolutely not.
So, um, you're gonna have to make a hard decision on imperfect, on the level of imperfect that you want right now, until we get some time to, you know, make it something a little bit better than what it is. Things are gonna fall through the cracks.
I'm gonna do that.
I got a question to my town.
On ten, sure.
About kennel licenses and two, this second one? I know a few people know that are hunters and they have four dogs. But, you know, they're residential, so what happens to them?
So anything that was pre-approved, you can keep, we have legal counsel, we have a, this doesn't go back, if you have a pre-existing non-conforming use, it would be, it would be pre-existing non-conformal. That'll run in perpetuity as long as with the land. This would be no new one. So if you were a kennel class two, yes, this is saying it's a no in RU two, um, RU two, RU three, and RU four. So yeah, no, they, they, they wouldn't do that. Now you can change it to a yes.
Your people with the four dogs, the hunters, they're not having business with the dogs, right? That's their personal use.
They're not... This is a kennel, so kennel has a definition, uh, as opposed to just having four dogs. So this may not affect the person that's not operating as a kennel. And it doesn't mean that we can't go back later and, and change these. Or even today, if you're like, "You know what, kennels, you know, we're fine with an RU four." You can go individually here and say, "Let's change that to a yes."
That's what I was saying, take, everybody take this home, just this half, everybody go through it, come back in one month with all your directions, we'll be going for hours. The other direction I had, Bill, it was back to number thirty-eight. And it kinda goes to, when I was on the planning board, Oak Harbor. Is that a planned village district, how would they do that?
We, I still don't know how you've got multi-family and mixed-use commercial, uh, because you, you don't have that provision in the books, so I don't...
I remember we voted on it one night and I looked at David Schwa, they go, "Congratulations, she did what they used to do a hundred years ago." And he goes, "What do you mean?" I go, "The storekeeper usually lived above this store."
That's a true mixed commercial use with residential. We do not have...
That's not addressed anywhere in my...
Not in your ordinance, you...
And I said, I'm getting into this, and I'm like, "Wait a minute."
Well, in the, the draft of the actual update of the table use category, we include all that. But before we get there, we're just trying to stave off the special use permits. And then once that is done, then we can go in and change the categories and change all the different uses from special use permit to yes or no. So it's kind of a, like a two-step process.
Another thing, there's another thing, that one section of Route two, I think, I don't see the trailer parts in it, I don't think the range is as commercial. So for them, the frontage of the lots is commercial, the back half of the lots is, is residential.
Right.
What do they have, I wonder, is it a business lot, is it L, is it LBI?
It's that, LB, that weird, that weird district that I asked about.
It's not very many, it's kind of place in town like that.
It's light business residential, it's a slash district. My understanding is when you guys did zoning...
The lots have two zoning classifications.
Yeah, a lot of them have two zoning classifications, it makes no sense what's allowed. Um, because the lots are very shallow. So I guess the idea was a light business residential was a happy medium. Uh, some people wanted to go commercial, some people wanted to stay residential, and they just kept it as light business residential, which from a planning point of view is, is, is not a great idea, cause you get, you don't get any of the tiers. So you can get a residential here and a light business, either have it all business on a major arterial roadway or do high-density residential. But that classification is in your zoning, it's a difficult one to... Most of those uses that go in LBR are a special use permits. So the, I think the idea at the time was, well, for those people, because they didn't wanna make people non-conforming. So if I owned a property along that Route two and I was intending to do residential and you're gonna change it to business, I may be angry of, say that it's a taking because I wanted to do residential. So instead of doing that, they said, "Okay, you can kinda have both, but what everyone likes to do is, is, is put you in a special use permit, meaning that each individual application will rise and fall, you know, based on the zoning board and the public." Right? So I think this gets by why the legislation occurred at the state level. They felt that that was, the towns were using that as a catch-all to make different decisions that weren't necessarily equitable to everyone. And that is why they went with the consistency of the comp, removing the consistency with the comprehensive plan and making everything objective, so that you treat me the same as you treat someone else. Um, but it was used before to kinda custom-fit that use. So getting back to the LBR, like you said, an LBR in a certain location on Route two may make a lot of sense with restrictions. And that's what we did on, on some of the newest developments. You have a lot of restrictions so they don't blow up into something that, that wasn't intended, like full business district, supposed to be light business. We no longer have the ability to put stipulations on a yes. So it's either a yes or a no, so that business can go in and out without stipulation. So the newest one we approved on Route three that you'll go by, the storage area for high-end cars, we did twenty-five stipulations on that thing. And the idea with the stipulations was we didn't want that to morph into something different, because it's not necessarily the applicant, it's usually when they sell it, cause it runs with the property. So we didn't wanna turn into another junkyard or another automobile dealership, so all these restrictions. But the only way we can put those restrictions on is through the special use permit criteria. Now, in this case, if it was just yes, you can get, you know, they can do it without any kind of restriction. Um, and, and that LBR is, we take a zone change on behalf of the town throughout the entirety of the comp plan, um, to change that to either business district or some other district. Or the other way you can attack that is you keep the lit, light business residential and you can add different uses to it when we do the entirety of the plan, like mixed-use residential. Maybe that's, that's a, a better area for the review.
Now, did you get grant money to redo all this?
No, not for this, I did, I did this myself. The grant money...
No, but wasn't the, did we get something to go through?
So we got the grant money to do what we already did. We changed our zoning and land development regs to comply with state law. This is kind of just on the towns to write the, the objective criteria and categorize them somehow.
How long would it take to do two hundred, how, how many?
Two hundred and twenty.
Whatever it was.
Two hundred and twenty.
The planning, is the planning board working on this with you?
Um, they, I took this to the planning board for the uses, we went through each actual use and they agreed to the yeses and nos. But putting criteria, you know, listen, it's pretty easy if you're gonna do a drive-through, it's trip generation, it's drive-through traffic, it's, it's, it's the menu board. It's more difficult when you're doing like a two-family. I mean, what kind of criteria, objective criteria? It can't be that it's compatible with the town, there is no such thing as compatible, because once, they're basically saying if it's a conditional use, it's inherent that's compatible with the comprehensive plan. So it's inherent. So you can't just say that this has a particular noxious use. So I don't know what you do with a two-family. If they meet their subject, they meet their water, and we have a housing issue, how would you ever say no to a two-family? You wouldn't. So unless you have other criteria like parking, so in my mind's eye, you think of some of the constrained areas in town where they're pre-existing non-conforming plats, you would say, "Okay, you need nine-by-eighteen parking spaces and you need two, that's reasonable." And it's gotta be off-street parking, that could be one thing. It could be, you know, drainage and so, because we rely on our portable water sources, we can't pollute the water we're drinking from. So there could be some level of proving that they're not gonna be amenable to, to that portable water source. But if they're getting a permit from O W T S and they have a design by an engineer and nutrient loading system, then you're not really gonna pollute that, that groundwater. Now, on the wood processing, think about how difficult this is. I mean, the wood processing, you could say maybe it's, the threshold there is you have more than X number of acres. I don't know what that is, twenty-five, thirty-five acres. Did you see how refined each one of these get? As you walk through these, and we can walk, and that's exactly what the planning board did, we started from, from one and we went through and just...
Bill, I wanna ask you a question. As you speak to that issue of what Olivia's raised, no at this point, no special use permit, but it might be allowed if the criteria I developed for it. Do I understand that correctly?
You're absolutely right. So the, the plan was that the board can, I mean, the town council can go back later when you got the stipulations and change that to a special use permit, because now you have criteria. And so maybe you could pick out four or five that really, you know, um, interest you and I can put my, you know, thinking cap on it, see if I can deliver something to the council that would be some performative, uh, based. I just don't know of the two hundred and something here, which ones are more important than others.
Well, I just, I'm just gonna put my two cents into this discussion. I think we should allow you to protect the town the way you're, you're proposing to do. And I think we should agree in six months that we revisit this. We've all had a chance to decide what really doesn't look right. Bill, are you... Bill, you've got the time to develop some criteria for special use. And I'd say six months and we do it. I, I want you to, I wanna follow through on what you're proposing, yes.
Yeah.
That's me.
I also would be with you wholeheartedly. Bill's putting so much work to this and-
Well, I'm sorry, but he's indicated the idea is a protection issue.
Yes. And it's temporary.
Right, because then we will back and each, like, each of your concerns, including yours, uh, we address it. And I'd say, we, we say six months, let's revisit, and if that's too much, three months, if you can do some work in three months. But I'd say at least, let's put it out on the docket and come back. And so we've all got an issue, if we do have, that you can address with us. That's just my thought. Because I appreciate what you've done and what you've presented to us.
I mean, if we could refine, uh, if I'd be so humble to suggest, if there, if you can pick out for me those use categories in here that are most concerning, instead of just putting all my energy in all these, it might be more productive to do that, so I can kind of get on those that are most difficult for the town. As opposed to an omnibus package, which, there's no way I can do that in a timeframe.
And what if we provide you, each of you, each of us provides you with some direction and then we come back so that Dan or Ray or others-
That's what I was saying, if we can just continue this part and come back next month to all our, what everybody's looking for.
Can we separate tonight to, to allow you to-
Well, I, I had Ken research today how, because that was the confusing part, where I saw it advertised with both of them together.
Well, it's one ordinance. It's one, it's not confusing, it's one ordinance. And I have this conversation any time. And, you know, if, if we're gonna move forward, we gotta stop the haphazard changing of our ordinance. It's been changed how many times now?
Presents.
And since, since like January. And it, it makes no sense whatsoever to do these little incremental changes based on what people are asking for versus state law that now have to be changed again and again and again, costing taxpayers a lot of money in advertising and time. Um, I'm just being incredibly blunt about a, a way forward that protects the town and hard decisions that need to be made that maybe not be palatable, uh, but is, is probably in the best interest of the town. You certainly could break it apart and you can go ad hoc. Um, but I will tell you that ad hoc approach is not something I support at all.
No, and you have not steer us wrong since you have been here. You have only given us good advice. You've protected the town to the best of your ability with, you, you can't protect the town, we can protect the town. You give us advice. And you're giving us the advice that this is what we need to do now, this is what we should do now to protect the town. So we need to do the right thing.
You know, feel that it would protect the town. Now, wi- within a timeframe, obviously, there's, there's time in which, you know, we waited this long to, to assemble some of your thoughts and funnel them, or just make changes to it. I mean, you could make changes, right? You say, I'm very uncomfortable with this. You can change a yes tonight. Um, or you could do it next month. You know, I don't-
Well, like I'm just picking out another one, like number fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
And we're actually, it should be another one lying in here for commercial, like the one that was just done on Route 2. Industrial parks. We put the one at south of Oak Harbor, that was three commercial buildings.
The garages.
They, that was on the mixed commercial, right? He, uh, you have, we have considered that with the zoning offer as mixed commercial. I think that's number-
Thirty-nine.
Is it thirty-nine? Thank you. That's, um, even before I got here, the zoning office had considered that thirty-nine. So that would be, you know, that's, you know, it was a special use permit, we know now, for any new application, any new, any application-
You see, now it's a no or a business no, which is, actually it came out pretty good, even though we've had some issues.
It's been-
It only came out good because of him.
There's like fifty stipulations. I'll share it to anyone who wants. The only reason why that doesn't become a problem in five years for the town is enforcement of, like I said, there's twenty stipulations, so that you don't have people living in that, selling it or corroding the commercial tax base by selling, you know, fenced goods out of it in ten years. So, so my ability to be able to stipulate it through a special use permit is something I like. And I think it's a good use with that. You've gotta regulate it somehow. If you just have a yes-
So if someone came in, we passed, if someone comes in six months from now and wants to do a similar project, then they've gotta change the zoning.
That's correct. That's correct. And that's what I mean. Maybe you wanna pick out, so what I heard tonight from you-
Well, like you said, that needs-
Is two-family-
Or control lot, too.
In mixed commercial. So I mean, I could put more energy into two-family and mixed commercial. Because I'm sure I could draft up something for, like, say you give me a handful of really important ones. I can probably, you know, draft some objective criteria. Um, I just don't know where to start, like, what's really important to do.
That's what I'm saying, it's somewhat digest.
Oh, it's a lot.
Well, that's why I suggested that we move forward tonight and then we revisit either three months from now or, or so that then you and everybody else who has concern on whoever. And I appreciate what, what Bill is doing for us.
We want to take some questions from the people that have signed up.
Do you have more that you wanted to present?
No, that section is done, um, before we stop talking about the other elements.
Okay.
I want to do Farm Brewery. Do you want to have a comment from the town from G O P?
It's really up to you. I mean, you may wanna get some comments on that, see if they, they mirror what you're believing.
We might have to call, we don't have one individual here who is with Farm Brewery. Uh, the first one is Earl Adams.
I'm here more to talk, I'm here to support the Farm Brewery.
I gotta stand up so we can hear you, Earl.
Earl Adams, Exeter, Rhode Island.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm here to support the Farm Brewery, but I'm here mostly to talk about the second part of the matrix. So if we're, we're gonna begin by talking about the Farm Brewery, I'll, I'll talk at the end, if that's okay.
Rob Carrera, did I say that right?
Yeah, Rob Carrera, I'm on the planning board. I'm actually here to address the Farm Cafe and the Farm Cafe Kitchen. So I would defer after the applicant's speak.
Okay. Uh, Ben Rockliff, is it Rockliff?
Ben Rockliff. Uh, I'm an attorney at Pinon Loaves. Um, I'm actually here on behalf of Mr. Adams as it relates to, uh, the Article II amendments that are proposed tonight. I also have other clients that are interested in bringing businesses to Exeter, so I thought I'd drive down here for it. Um, I understand the predicament that the town is in. They're trying to do the right thing and be protectionist as it relates to uses, but it could be looked at from another perspective. Uh, the legislature effectively says that any of these special use permit uses are permitted as a right. And it sounds to me like what we're trying to do here is we're just saying wholesale, well, for the most part anyways, wholesale, no, you can't use your property for these specific purposes, whereas there was potential for those uses in the past. And I think there's unintended consequences with doing that. So I, I do think that, um, for those property owners that are here in town, um, it puts them at a disadvantage. It also creates some confusion with, you know, possible business owners that might want to come to town or to purchase land in town for, for purposes that otherwise would, would be permitted in the past. Um, so I think it's worthwhile to, to look at this carefully and to protect against those unintended consequences before we start taking away landowner rights.
That's exactly what our planner's trying to do, protect the town.
Listen, I can't make up the last name. I can make up the first name, it's Matt. I cannot make up your writing, the last name.
Richardson, sorry.
Yours is worse than mine.
That's because I'm left in the end.
You wanna hold off until he gives that presentation?
Sure.
I know what you're here for.
Sure.
And number five, A C Davis.
A C Davis, one forty-six, Beachwood Hill Trail. Uh, regarding farm ordinances, same applies to the greenhouse, this one, um, the next one for Earl, and even solar to some degree. The requirement that a farm must be operating for five years is counterproductive and across purposes to a rural future for the town. There are a number of large tracts in Exeter that aren't even farms yet. No commercial venture, and a farm is a commercial venture, can justify expenditures for five years with no return. The language stifles competition. It creates an unfair advantage for existing operations and it prevents new entrants. It means somebody who owns raw land now, that is, is closed out from this as an option, that pushes these large tracts directly into a residential subdivision direction. I don't think it's a good idea to be short-sighted and that we should leave these future options open by removing that five-year requirement from all of these, uh, farm ordinances.
Okay, Bill, you wanna go off to the Farm Brewery now?
Can I?
Uh, sure.
Because I have a question. I'll be having to put my name in, but I just have a question.
Just sign it for the record, please.
Yep. So I thought that, uh, Mary Beth Canoyer, um, the, the question that I had, I thought he brought up a, a good comment. He can't go through the whole two-hundred and twenty-eight to determine objective criteria. But just in listening to what the council had to say about items that seemed important, um, item number ten, twenty-four, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty-one, you all mentioned a few times, and it just makes sense for him to go ahead and start creating some language around objective criteria for those. I mean, they're gonna have to do, you're gonna have to create objective criteria for all of them, but those five, why not let him go ahead and get started on nos? So that when you beat back in a month, you've got some language to look at. It gives him a chance to start going through some of those, you know, high-pressure items.
What were those numbers again?
Ten, ten was the kennels, twenty-four was the sale of lumber. And then thirty-eight is the two-family dwelling, thirty-nine is mixed-use commercial, and then forty-one, wood processing. So weekly, I just thought it might be helpful, because those seem to be items that were hot topics to have him consider drawing up some objective criteria for those to start. Does that, Mr. DePresto, can you, does that make sense to-
Um, to the president, yeah, I mean, I think that was one of my suggestions, was that anytime I can refine, you know, what's presented is often not what is approved. And I try to tell this to my planning board, this is an iterative process. It's up to everyone to add specific language or rejection of language as opposed to just, you know, sitting back and, and saying no to everything or yes to everything. So as far as we can in terms of, um, legitimizing maybe a handful of use codes that are really important, I can start on, it's just one step closer to getting to the, to the finish line. I'm just unsure that ten, twenty-four, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-one is inclusive of all your concerns.
I understand, I'm still digesting it all.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So I, I don't, I don't know, that's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing it isn't um, necessarily the limitation of where I should be going at this point. Um, so again, my direction is through the town council and I'll do whatever you tell me to do.
Could you, uh, say what you said before you suggested? Again, from you. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you say it again, please?
Uh, I said, well, as I always do, uh, what I think you might be speaking about is that I suggested we go ahead with what you've proposed and that we come back, we can give you direction after we've approved this and revisit in either three months, six months. Uh, use those, you see, because the suggestion I hear now is that you're gonna remove the N and, and replace it with an S. Is that, is that the intent, so that these items then would be-
No.
It has to be, it has to be a yes or a no.
He's taking the, he's taking the- He's taking the S away.
They were already gone, right? You're taking the-
In, in this proposal, the yeses would go-
Yeah, you're, you're thinking either it's either required or an N.
That is correct. That's what's in front of you.
And so we're revisiting the ones that were just suggested. To do what?
To add-
I thought you were gonna do criteria so that they would be availability for a special use permit.
No, so when you put a yes.
So when you put it, what you're saying.
So if you, if it's a use that you want to see in town, but it needs some finessing, you can put a yes.
Oh, yes.
But it needs the criteria.
Well, with me, especially, just through the president, sorry. I, I heard probably two things tonight. I heard either, or three. As is, the Ss would go away and you'd have a yes and a no until such time that criteria is- The problem with that was the criteria may take a while. So to reengage that special use permit in the future-
But that's the point, right, to reengage the S?
With objective.
Which is what I had just suggested, unless I misspoke. That's what I meant, that we would be replacing an N for, with an S. So that then now you could develop criteria for your issue.
The way this state law is, he has to be very specific.
I understand that.
Whereas in the planning process before, he could write the stipulations down in the planning process. You're not allowed to do that now.
I understand. So instead, he's replaced that one wasn't asked with an N. Am I correct?
It's some N, some yeses.
Oh, and some yes.
Some yeses. Some go from special use permit to allow.
To let it go.
And, and so that's why some of the testimony heard tonight wasn't necessarily correct, because in, in some cases, you get more rights than you had before. So I would say that was, you know, not necessarily, um, correct.
But to be able to grant over the future, you have to be very specific and-
Correct. So I, what I heard is, put this in dance until I get some time to either do all two-hundred and twenty-eight or do a targeted, or approve what I have tonight. And then they all either turn yeses or nos and come back later on to turn some of them back into special use permits. So you got those three things out there.
And I wanna throw another question at you, Bill, while we're here, because I forgot to ask that when I had this one, so. Like, two, two-family dwelling structures, uh, what's it about?
Ten?
Yeah, number thirty-eight again, and there was the other one, there was the other one, there's single-family structures. It's, we'll start at number one. Single-family structures, business, light business residential, light industrial. Didn't they pass the law at the General Assembly last year that you could build with anything regardless of the zoning classifications? Because problems with zoning.
I know there's a piece of legislation that said if it was business, then a single-family use is an allowed use, by right? I don't know that that passed, or we can check.
Because I remember it was prominent scream because of all these empty vacant commercial lots and everything.
I remember the legislation, and the legislation was, um, if you're in a business, then a single family has to be an allowed right. Now, I don't know that that passed, but we'll check it.
Yeah, because they were screaming up there for more housing, I think, with multi-family everything.
And the idea, it is, it's well-founded, right? So if you have an older section of, say, Route 1, where it was an arterial roadway before ninety-five was built, and once ninety-five is built, it becomes kind of like a, you know, a second-class corridor of commercial, strip development as we know it, then it makes sense maybe to use all that infrastructure to do high-density development. That was the thinking.
But when I'm reading that, they can come down and say, well, you can't do that, you know?
Um, I don't know that that passed.
Yeah, so I don't remember exactly.
And the other thing you have to look at as a planner, we have to look at all our competing interests. So because we have such limited business, I'm trying to protect the town taxpay residents, I know everyone here, is, our portfolio kind of is all-in-one, you know, stock. You know, we don't have a lot of business development, we don't have a lot of light industrial. So any kind of influx with housing is gonna directly affect the bottom line in terms of if they have school impact on, on children and, and the dollar for the taxpayer. So having a diversified portfolio of business and light industrial, uh, zoned land is really important. So what am I getting there? Well, you don't necessarily wanna take your business zone, if you don't have a lot, and put residential in.
Which we're doing.
The same thing with light industrial. You wanna pick light industrial and you can put a fast-food restaurant. Highest and best use is usually commensurate with taxes. And I know the wonderful colleague I have to my right, really, really, you know, the price is stretching a dollar. So to- So to me, I think a no in a business district and left precluded by the state of Rhode Island.
Well, I picked that out because I remember they were pushing that, I didn't know if it passed or not.
I'll check it. It's a good question, I do remember the legislation.
And they're pushing it, oh, we go. Say, you want to go to the farm brewery before we get off track again?
Sure.
Go right ahead.
So section two is farm cafe, and we're gonna refer to the memorandum that I've had on this subject. And, and so, again, with the memorandum that we have, I really kind of take it and kind of boil it down on what we're trying to do here. And it comes down to a change in the definition of farm brewery, farm cafe as a new use in the actual use code. Farm cafe is a definition. Farm cafe kitchen is a definition, because we limit the size of that, so we need a definition. We added footnote 15 to the zoning use table, appendix A, article 2, zoning section 2.4, zoning use table. And so, what we're trying to do here is, there was a proposal, an initiative by a very successful business owner in town to allow some limited food service subordinate to the farm brewery that can kind of keep the patrons involved, and then we talked about maybe also kind of spinning in there the idea that the comprehensive plan was strong on, and that's locally grown, local ingredients, and how we can actually make this a symbiotic relationship with our, you know, agricultural and the artisans that we have in this town. And came up with the idea that, you know, started with the individual application, but morphed into something that was much more detailed by the planning board, and that's the reason why you're here, this is actually a planning board authored application, technically, and I know there was some confusion on that, but I'm not gonna get into that now. And the reason why it became a planning board application is because, on the next page you'll see, we identified a lot of issues that were kind of a slippery slope type of thing. Where do we have residentially zoned properties that with the intensity of uses, really turn into commercial use? How do we stop that? How do we, how do we stop that? Because this is a residential district. Farm brewery and food service are becoming the primary use of a residential land, as opposed to the farm. So at what point does the farm brewery and the restaurant become the primary use, and the farm is subordinate? That would be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and inconsistent with our zoning ordinance. So where do we go from farm, farm brewery, to farm brewery with a restaurant? Residentially zoned property transferring into commercial business in a tavern raises significant concerns regarding zoning integrity and future land use implications. Especially if you're a resident or happen to be budding a residential district, and all of a sudden this, you know, farm brewery turns into a restaurant that is more famous for their food than it is for anything else. And how does it call prolonged degradation of the residential zoning classification? This is, I think, lost throughout this, and I'm gonna read this. This is your, this is your definition in your municipal code. A residential rural district, RU4, purpose of RU4 zone is to protect land now used for forestry, farming, and related activities, and the natural habitat and wildlife, and to preserve the area's rural character. This zone provides land suitable for low-density residential development, and reserves land for future farming, forestry, conservation. That is it, right? We talk around the edges, but that is your zoning district. If you don't like that, you need to change it. Now, a business district, on the other hand, is the purpose of a business zone is to provide areas for business that serve the day-to-day needs of residential population of the community. Also, its purpose is to provide areas of commercial activities to serve the needs of the entire community and contiguous regions. Any use not specifically limited as a permitted use is prohibited. Very important there, right? Because now they're sliding from that residential to something. Or farming, farm brewery, and now farm brewery with a restaurant. So, so then we speak to the compatibility with surrounding residential land uses and zoning, compatibility with the state-approved comprehensive plan, and then issues like parking and traffic. So in this next section, we speak about the original request, which was, you know, brought forth, and the planning board spent many, you know, hours looking through that original request, which is on the screen now. And you can see, you know, it suggests about the farm cafe, but really has no belts and suspenders on how that would be actuated all the time. And more importantly, when we're doing a zone change, this is about the entirety of the town that's not an individual block or two. So, you know, my job is to look out for the town, and so I wrote several memoranda, you know, kind of trying to box around a use that would be incredibly supportive to the community and to the business, without destroying the zoning in the comprehensive plan. So we had several revised concepts, revised language. We talk about consistency with the comprehensive plan, which is really important, because the comprehensive plan's spent a lot of time, and economic development plan that is centered around exit of growth, exit of buys, and, you know, keeping us from being anywhere USA like one of our neighbors that we have, right? We don't want to be anywhere USA. We, we think we have a great business model that we can exploit, and could be the only town in the state of Rhode Island that really embraces, you know, growth and the use of our own product within the community that we serve. It's interesting, because if you looked at, you know, one of my colleagues on the planning board, you know, visited a similar type of facility, and it was amazing that they, they were just totally embracing the local grown and the local products. And I want to show you a homemade pizza sauce, whose ingredients are as follows. Tomato, olive oil, spices, and water, right? That's local. Let me read you with an ordinary ingredient that would be in a commercial. Water, tomato paste, diced tomatoes, tomato juice, who knew? Canola oil, we all know what canola oil is, right? Salt, and citric acid. I'm gonna argue that what we're proposing tonight is about, again, creating that symbiotic relationship, where if we had a subordinate food use, a food purveyor that used entirely local ingredients, this would be something that would help a farmer's out, help everyone in the town, and it would be, more importantly, it would be different. I remember I said anywhere USA, anyone can get a pizza anywhere or food anywhere. This needs to be different. So if we're going down the road, we're returning farms into farm cafes, or, or, you know, drinking establishments, we need to do it differently, and we need to do it within the context of our state-approved comprehensive plan. And that is really embracing the requirement that local products be used. So in the planning, you know, report, I talk about the slippery slope, I talk about different belts and suspenders, and how we would create these guardrails, that's what I call them, guardrails, for anyone that's looking to establish a farm cafe. And so, we looked at it in four different, you know, kind of categories. One, how will we treat the development? So how do we review the development? So we decided on minor land development that could give us some prior response to a design of a particular application, and we talked about having stipulations for each particular application that may come in through. So the minor land development, for instance, would be looking at a farm cafe proposal for parking and circulation. If you're really popular, and you're not located in an area that can accommodate parking, you're gonna have parking all over arterial roadways and roadways. And that is not consistent with the plan, not consistent with zoning, and certainly not consistent with the underlying zoning district, which is, which in many cases is a residential. Then we talked about limitations. So how can we limit the facility from not turning into a full-blown kitchen that's more famous for their food than the craft brewery or the farm brewery? So we had some limitations that we put in there for the size of the kitchen. We went through a lot of this, and I visited a couple of, you know, similar type of facilities that we took a look at a kitchen. We started off something relatively smaller than what was actually in the version you have in front of you, and we came to some kind of agreement on a size of the kitchen. The next was a service window. So how do you prevent this from just being a sit-down restaurant? That I go there and I don't even buy, you know, farm brewery beer, and I just bring my family there for food, and it becomes a restaurant, right? So we looked at the idea of a window surface entrance, where you go up and you actually order from the window, and you go up and get your food. And that would give some limitations to the food being subordinate to the farm brewery, which is also subordinate to the farmer. So we have some limitations in that regard. So anyway. Then sourcing local, this was really important. I know I had started with like 75%, but the menu must display local ingredients, and if possible, their source locations. A minimum, it was decided a minimum of 51% of the menu items must be sourced from a local farmer's priority. There was a lot of argument about, I mean, a lot of difference of opinion on what that should be. It should be 75%, 50%. There was some good information about what do we do in the winter, we can source some of the products. So we settled on 51%, and that product's gonna be obtained within a 125-mile radius, which I still think is large, but, you know, plain water approved, and that's fine. So there was a lot of real, you know, work and collaboration as to, you know, what the potential ordinance could be. It wasn't just like that kind of a one-size-fits-all. And the other thing is annual reporting. So how do we make sure that this is not something that, you know, you're just buying frozen pizzas and selling them because, you know, you want to sell, you know, more beer? So we're requiring that we have annual reporting to me and the town planner, I mean, to the town council, and the town planner about the sourcing. We want to make sure that it's, you know, sourced locally and not outside of what the intent was. So once we got by all that information, we tried to tie this in with what we had just in front of us, because it all kind of sits in the same use ordinance, the same ordinance that we have. And so we included the definitions, as you can see here, farm, farm brewery, farm cafe, farm kitchen. There's been questions on that, we can talk about it, but we talked about 35% of the total gross floor designated for the principal use, and restricted to a maximum of 600 feet, square feet, which is still a large kitchen. You know, I began with the size of a, you know, a, you know, a food truck. And I, you know, spoke with the applicant, and they were like, it's way too small, and we went through some numbers, and that's what we settled on. As you see in the ordinance, we actually include a new actual use line item, and it's, it's number 60B, farm cafe within a farm brewery. And we have a yes, a yes, and a yes within three of the districts, and a footnote 15. So when we go down to 15.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Note 15 shall be considered a minor land development project that is subject to review and approval by the planning board of 15.
That's correct?
Yeah.
It's on the first section.
Number 15, it's way in the back, Bill, shall comply with the exit of the zone in ordinance, appendix A, section 1.2, entitled Definitions 35A, farm cafe, and shall be considered a minor land development project requiring review and approval by the planning board in a public meeting in accordance with Exeter Code of Ordinance in appendix B, section 7.3, performance and development standards. The planning board may set conditions to ensure operations fit with the environment and do no harm to local roadways and/or neighborhoods. Our farm cafe must have been an annual report to the town council, planning board, and the town planner. That word right, town council, planning board, or should it be town council?
It should say town council and planning board.
And planning board, you got all one word there.
Town council, comma, planning board, and town planner.
Town council, planning board, and town planner. Page 14, looking right. Your report must include receipts for food ingredients. Purchases showing which ingredients were purchased locally versus non-local, along with verification of locally sourced items from Exeter, Rhode Island, or regional suppliers. It shall detail quantities, menu descriptions, and partnerships with local producers. Failure to satisfy all specified requirements will result in the use classification as not allowed.
Yeah, and then 16 after that, okay, it's, we have the performance standing. So that would be little belts and suspenders for, again, when we look at these, once you put it in your use table, every lot is not the same. So that gives some restrictions on whether or not that farm cafe would meet those criteria. And the other thing is, if it's truly gonna be subordinate to a farm brewery, and you don't want to open up all your residential property to taverns, you're gonna have to restrict it somehow. I mean, there's no easy way out of doing that, other than saying it is an approval. Just so you know, that's not something you can do today. So this would be opening the farm to not only the farm brewery, which was already done, but even further. And then somehow you need to regulate that. So, I mean, are there other ways to, you know, cut this? Fine, maybe, but in my view, and you can see in the screen, other places do a very good job of this. A truck board, showing exactly what their greens are and where pharma came from. So you can read it on the right-hand side, it'll say like, you know, Morris Pharma, or Basil, or cheese comes from here. It really is an important part of the proposal. Without it, it doesn't stand. And so, you know, that's the reason for the restrictions that I have today. So, so anyway, so that's what's out there, and that's what I'm proposing. And by the way, the planning board approved the changes. You need, you need to understand.
The only thing that, like, I like this all, pretty much, the only couple of little things, like, should you include in that definition that Dan just read, like, the month? Or the day, like, the first day of May?
Sure.
That's when this report is due, because?
Okay.
When is it due, or?
Absolutely.
And should we create some kind of form, or like, I don't know?
Probably.
Just so it's?
I mean, I can, I can easily.
Because you can say you want all these things, and then somebody hands you a report that is missing half of the things, but it's a comprehensive report, but they're not hitting all the marks that we asked for.
Certainly, so two things, so yes, we can include a date certain.
I got a question.
And then two, we can.
They're gonna have to get a victoling license, correct? Dessert food?
On the brewery, on brewery, I'm not sure.
On the farm cafe. Could make it contingent.
The license.
Oh, licensing.
Yeah, I mean, I would think it would be like, the food is not deserved.
I might need legal counsel to help me with some language, if you don't mind, I'm shocked as told, that's a great idea. That's better than.
That's spreading it out. I'm just thinking some of the state licenses I have, renew in March, and then I got another one in June, and then one in August. Just making it easy.
So that'd be a full handle of the license?
Which we issued.
We do their alcohol license, right, or no? No, because it's a farm license. Yep, okay.
So we can tie to licensing, not only the prepare, but the date, the renewal date?
It also might, it also might be if not making the food, and it's bringing it in or package. I don't think they need a license. Like, they're making it.
Yeah, the application, to get a kitchen.
And they're making it.
Yep.
Well, so if it says annual licensing procedure, or whatever the annual, it's in November, right? Well, so if it says annual licensing procedure or whatever the annual, it's in November, right?
Yeah, you could have the report do with the.
With the applicant with the licensification, right, so then.
That's a requirement of.
And my other question was, um, why no takeout?
Oh, for me? Oh, it, it was very clear to me about this use being subordinate and not taking over as a principal use. In a residential, if, if you have a very successful takeout.
Okay.
Then you may have people going there just for the takeout. The idea here was to be supportive of the farm. And that's what a farm brewery is.
If I was sitting there and I had something good to eat and I'm like, I want to take some of this home to my husband, but I ate all of this, I am not allowed to do that?
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm, you mean a doggy bag? I'm not saying we, a doggy. I meant that if you call up and, and show up to the window and, and bought a food because they got the best food in the world, um, you can do that, you might as well just, you change it to business or something.
No, I get that now.
But shouldn't you have been drinking while you were eating?
All right, Calvin, I know you want to say something.
I, I already, well, no, I, I, all I can say is it's extremely comprehensive and extremely thorough and, and the work that's been done between Bill and his planning board and that, how many, several meetings?
Several meetings, months, months.
Months, months.
Well, I wanted to say that, months and months, because I think initially it appeared this could be a sort of a simple insertion.
Right.
And, uh, we've, we've found some frustration on the thought of the individual who came to us. And you've done an incredibly thorough job and I'm not here to question, I'm here to appreciate.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Once he asks for comment, change what.
Okay. I know Matt, you, you, you're the applicant, you want to say anything to this?
Um, sure, Joe, I, I had a couple of questions and a couple of comments.
Yeah, we can here.
Uh, Matt Richardson from Tilted Barn, um, I did have, I have one question and a couple of comments. I'll try and brief that, I don't think I have long. Um, just to Cal's point too, the, uh, the frustration I had on this is not a lack of appreciation for the work done by everyone, it was just more frustrationist terms of the process and the sort of, from the outside looking in, the lack of understanding as to why it kind of got taken out of my hands and put into the planning board's hands and sort of taken off of my, out of my control. We don't have to talk about it tonight, but I meant no disrespect and maybe it's a learning process for all of us, me as an applicant and you guys as, um, the council and the planning board to kind of like be a little more, um, transparent in that, but no disrespect meant to anyone on that. One question, technical question I had on the definition, if I can, um, the definition that I had proposed initially, um, and one of the memos from Bill, the March eleventh memo that shows sort of the, um, what I initially proposed as a, as a starting point versus what's shown here for one point two thirty-five A in the March twelfth definition. Um, it's essentially worded differently, but essentially the same, it hits all the same points, um, being subordinate to the farm is something that I mentioned, being licensed by the state, um, having to feature local products, all that is the same. The one thing that Bill brought up, which I think is a smart point, was talking about sort of the limitations in this and, and he kind of honed in on the kitchen size as a big part of it. Um, so in thirty-five A, it says the kitchen cannot exceed thirty-five percent of the building's total area or six hundred square foot maximum. The next section, thirty-five B, talking about the farm cafe kitchen, it talks about what is included within the kitchen that would be as part of that overall size of the kitchen. Uh, the one concern I have in that is it specifically says, talks about appliances such as oven, microwave, or range, and a refrigerator, or other cold storage units specifically designed to preserve food freshness and safety. Um, to me, that's your walk-in units, your walk-in coolers. If the size of the walk-in cooler is going to be included in the size of the overall kitchen, I think that's a, a real, um, kind of deal breaker. We have two coolers now that total about thirteen hundred square feet of cold storage. Granted, that's for beer, but, um, being, you know, a farm kitchen, there are times, especially during harvest season, you're gonna have a lot of produce to keep cold. Um, in the wintertime, you're gonna have a lot of root crops, you're gonna want to kind of keep cold in that cooler. And if the cooler plus the kitchen can't be more than six hundred square feet, I don't think that's doable. So I just, my comment on that is that I think the walk-in, the refrigeration cannot be included in the kitchen size, I think that's gonna be, um, a problem, that's for sure.
Is the walk-in cooler, would that traditionally be in the kitchen or, like, I'm imagining if this is the room in?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is.
You open this door and you go up into the cooler.
Yeah, so that.
Um, but this, the way it's worded, and this is new, this wasn't anything that was, that was part of this definition, this is Bill and the planning board, but it says the kitchen is defined as a room that contains one or more of the following appliances or is located within three feet of such appliances, so.
Yeah.
Right adjacent to it.
Yeah.
And it talks about specifically cold storage units. So, I mean, the cold storage unit may be six hundred square feet of house, all this produce that you're gonna use in the kitchen, so I just think that that's one thing I would ask or suggest to be amended in the definition. Otherwise, I, I mean, everything else, like everyone said, we kind of talked at length about this, I think it's a great, uh, benefit to the town, not just the town for us, but in terms of farms in general. Um, I think that's something that Exeter has really done a great job focusing on and supporting and trying to advocate for. We are benefits of that, we've been, it's been ten years since we opened, we, I went through this with David Schwade, um, ten years ago, and we came up with the farm brewery definition and we're very appreciative of it and we've had ten years of success and really, I feel like we've been an asset to the town, we haven't had a single complaint to you guys about anything, so I really think kind of shows that thinking outside the box, um, can really benefit a lot of people in town, um, and we try and give back to the town as much as possible. I, the one, the, the one feedback I have on all of this, and it's sort of concerning to read some of the language in here because I, I feel like it's sort of, what I'm hearing kind of both sides of it, one side is we need to support the farms in town, we need to, um, at the same time, protect the town. I guess the point I'm trying to make is farming is not easy, anyone, anyone knows that. And part of farming is having to sell your product, that's the bottom line, you can farm all you want, but if you can't sell your product, then you're gonna have to sell the farm, essentially. And so I think that this is a way to show that, um, it's supporting the farms and also giving them an outlet to, to sell their product. And just like that jar of sauce that Bill had there, it's one way to take your tomatoes and turn it into something much more lucrative and much more successful. So to take your tomatoes and your basil and to make sauce and to turn it into pizza, that's how farms are gonna be successful and be sustainable. So this is a way, yes, it's something you need to think about, think about the town in general, make sure no one abuses it, but at the same time, we need to focus, I think, on supporting those farms and giving them an outlet to not only farm, but have a way to sell what they are farming. Um, so I think that's something that needs to be thought of and not thinking about how it's, it's certainly not taking advantage and, and, you know, starting a restaurant, you know, being a cornerstone hub would be much easier than doing this farm cafe, just getting some commercial in and buying ingredients in and selling it, that's much easier than farming and raising it and growing it and making it yourself. Um, so it just might do senses, I think that's a great reason, a great idea for those reasons and I think we need to be supportive of it.
Mr. Carrera, you wanted to speak for this?
Yes. Do you need to miss that?
Oh, please.
Okay.
Be ready or death.
And speak loudly, right? Um, I'll be Bill's wingman on this because we've talked a lot about it. Um, on the planning board and we ask that they buy fifty-one percent of their ingredients for the pizza from local farmers. If I had to do it again, I would ask for a much higher percentage. Tilted Barn has a unique opportunity to supplement their brewery with a business that would benefit our community. The owners of the brewery can grow their business while creating a market for other farmers in town to sell the produce. This will lead to greater farm revenue and more local employment. Tilted Barn has two choices regarding pizza. You can sell low-quality pizza with ingredients bought wholesale, uh, customers may buy it because they should eat something before they drive home, or they can buy that pizza at a chain restaurant on the way home. Or they can sell farm table pizza made from ingredients grown and produced by local farms. On the menu board, as Bill said, they can list the local farms that supply the ingredients. Uh, this will create a memorable experience for diners, one they will tell family and friends about. Word of mouth is how local businesses grow. Farm-to-table is not a new concept, especially with craft breweries. Uh, in Maine, it is common for craft breweries with pizza ovens to buy locally sourced ingredients. The craft breweries that do not source their products locally are the outliers. People want all-natural, farm-raised food, nut food loaded with sugar, salt, trans fats, carbohydrates, or any of the other things you see on these labels. I will cite the testimony of a man named Nate Wiles, owner and managing partner of Flight Deck Brewery, Brunswick, Maine. Mr. Wiles said using local sourced ingredients in his pizza has helped grow his business. Quote, "It has made an immediate and very measurable difference in sales across the board, in customer time on-site across the board, and the percentage of positive reviews we receive have also gone up." Statistics he cites is a two-hundred percent increase in non-alcoholic beverage sales, six times the number of high chairs needed for families, forty percent greater proportion of repeat local customers, more traffic during lunch and other previous slower times, higher percentage of positive reviews shared by customers. So how does, how do other businesses benefit in a craft brewery using locally sourced ingredients to make a pizza? I'll give you an example, Good Crust in Canaan, Maine. Good Crust is a food manufacturing business that makes pizza dough from more than two-hundred breweries, food service programs, natural food stores, and restaurants throughout New Orleans. More than six hundred farmers who supply grain to Good Crust have pledged never to use chemical fertilizers or pesticides under grain crops. Heather Kerner, CEO and founder of Good Crust, has this to say on her website. Quote, "We believe in our community's ability to feed itself and we're proud of the fresh, flavorful foods we can grow and cook right here in Maine." Quote, "Our choice is to use all local freshly milled grains is deliberate to support Maine farmers and millers because we know that investing in locally grown, healthful ingredients has a positive ripple effect across the entire community." "When we use the land beneath our feet," she said, "we help ourselves and we work together, we strengthen our regional economy and grow business that provides purposeful jobs for local people, support small family farmers who value and implement sustainable practices, we eat in delight and wear nutritious foods, and we decrease CO2 emissions because we reduce the distance that food has to travel." Uh, to further quote Ms. Kerner, "I am an organic grower and home baker at heart. I believe that good health is achieved when people have access to wholesome, healthy food and purposeful paid work. I love to source ingredients that people I know have taught to grow, spent careful time preserving, and that have traveled a very short distance from farm-to-table, and I'm proud to help others do that. We can accomplish that here in Exeter. We have the farmers doing the hard work of growing, harvesting, and raising healthy food. We need to provide the markets for them to sell their products. Requiring one-hundred percent locally sourced ingredients for farm cafes would be a start." And, Bill, thank you, thank you.
Earl, do you want to speak again to this?
Uh, no, I'm all for this. Mr. President, do you mind if I just say something?
I got, you're next, Ben, Ben Ratcliffe?
Ben Ratcliffe, yes. Um, I just wanted to commend the planner and everyone else on spending so much time on, uh, the ordinance. I, I think it's great that, uh, the town is looking ahead and looking at, uh, additional uses for, uh, property and real estate in the town. Um, Tilted Barn has been, uh, a destination for me personally for close to a decade. I, I've always found an excuse to take my kids from, I live in the East Bay, to drive down to Mystic Aquarium and always make a stop on the way back. And I remember my kids, uh, early on playing with your kids outside when the old barn was there, so it's a, it's a great spot, um, and, and glad to see that it's moving in the right direction, um, in terms of expansion, in a, in a meaningful but, but cautious way. I just want to compare that to what's going on with the Article Two amendments, because I do think that it is worth comparing, right? This, this to me, this, uh, you know, farm, um, additions, uh, the farm kitchens and all of that has taken months, right? Close to a year for the town to kind of come together and present these new definitions and just add a couple additional uses to the use table. Compare that to the two-hundred-and-twenty-plus uses, that most of which we're just gonna say in an hour, two hours meeting, no, nobody can do this. Nobody in town can have a horseback riding facility, hard stop. No new private fishing and hunting areas, hard stop. I think we need to spend more time and cautiously go through the use table and the changes that were about to be made or proposed to be made. If it takes a year to come up with a farm kitchen definition to propose to the council for adoption, how long is it going to take to come up with a definition or special use criteria for horseback riding?
Do you want to come work for the town, Ben Ratcliffe? Because we could use some extra help. Because our part-time planner, you wonder why things take so long.
It has nothing to do with the planner, I think the planner's done an excellent job.
Oh, he's done an excellent job, there's not enough of him, we need three more of him if you would like things to happen faster than a year.
It wasn't meant to be an insult, it was supposed to state the fact, because it is fact, that it took this long to have a thoughtful process to put this in place.
Yeah, because we have a part-time.
Correct.
Planner and everybody is part-time here.
Agreed.
So relax.
So if we're gonna sit, I have to relax. I, we're gonna take two-hundred-and-twenty uses off the table and then we're gonna have a thoughtful process for each of those to put that back in place. How long is that going to take? We're taking away townspeople's rights to use their property, we should do it in a thoughtful way.
Temporarily, yes. To protect the town and to protect everybody else in the town.
So in a year, we'll have a thoughtful, uh, criteria for horseback riding, just, thank you.
Wonderful. I hope you like it, living in the East Bay.
Danny? I'd like to address this. Olivia, Ben's here representing me because of what's happened. Some of the use changes that are proposed take away things that I've been doing on the farm since seventeen thirty-eight. We have a boarding, we have boarding, we have horses, we have people come to the farm with lessons. In one swoop of the pen, tonight, you could take away all our hunting, you could take away our work, Olivia, it's my turn to talk.
I didn't say anything, Earl.
You can, you have criticized somebody who's here on my behalf, who's supporting, and I'm here to support the farm cafe, but you're here and these changes tonight could affect me negatively on what I'm trying to do, okay, and, and, and continue to support what we've been doing on our farm. My family has farmed that land since seventeen thirty-eight. We have had seventy years of field trials and propagation of birds, et cetera. And I'm here and Ben's here just to talk about things that affect me and we're concerned. So all's we asked and is Ben was to just evaluate it, take thirty days to evaluate it, that's it. Or that's what Danny has projected.
My planner says.
I'm not done, I'm not done talking yet, please. I'm just asking that you please respect us as farmers and, and.
Absolutely.
And this man here, who has built a business from scratch, that we have worked, he's worked hard, going through the building permits and the, and the buildings and through the building department and, and, and crafting beer for all this time, it's a long process. And, and, and again, I don't think it's fair to criticize our concerns of what we have been doing for hundreds of years and, and everything that we do on the farm, we raise the feed that, that feed the cattle that he will be serving as hamburgers, so you and Calvin and everybody else in here can do that. I'm sorry to hear that. Uh, but, but then you'd appreciate the fact that my farm is all organic.
Absolutely.
Okay? And my farm is all organic. So that's all I wanted to do is just address the fact that we, we, we support it, we're not here to not support Bill or anything that's going on, but at the same token, you have to appreciate what we have done and how hard we work as well.
Absolutely.
So that we can produce the vegetables, the tomatoes for the tomato base for this, that's all I.
We have a tomato factory going in. We're gonna have lots of tomatoes. We're going to have lots of tomatoes.
Okay, Asa Davis?
Asa Davis, 146 Beachwood Hill Trail. If there are 220 lines on here that are coming from special use to prohibited, and we take a year to make one special adjustment for a farm cafe, the rough estimate then, to answer your question, is that when it's one year for each one, 220 years from now, we'll be done, and we'll be back where we are starting today.
Can I order, do you have anything else?
Gee, I must be missing something because I'm looking at this and I'm not, I'm not seeing red changes on all 228. So I guess I would have to question 220 years because, I mean, there are a number of them that have, yes, it's a no, it did not change. So I think, you know, I respect a good argument, but it has to be based on fact, and there just are 228 changes, and I fact, there are many here that are not changed. The only other thing that I would bring up that hasn't been addressed, and I understand people talk about, thinking about farmers and how this benefits them, and they're right on with that. I'm not a person who consumes alcohol, so I'm not a person who goes there, but I have to think about people who do and be mindful drinkers. And when they put food into their systems, I believe that that creates a safer person who transports home, and that creates a safer community because people who sit and consume alcohol, you know, by itself, that could, you know, and that's a subjective choice for each person, but that could certainly be a deterrent for the community. And the rest of the people who are on roads and so forth that, you know, have to transport with those other people on the road. And so I think about, you know, it hasn't been said, but I do think that it's, you know, it would just be, you know, a benefit in that way. I think just, you know, consuming alcohol without consuming food might not be the better choice.
Any other comments?
Mr. President, I'll ask you, you probably know better than most farmers in town. Are there the ingredients for, to make a pizza available in town? Are there people making doughs, cheeses, melts, beefs?
Not that I know of, dough, tomatoes, peppers, onions.
Cheese. Cheese.
Yeah.
Yeah, the vegetable, but I don't think there's enough land to grow wheat in this town.
That's where the 125-mile radius came from. The closest place to buy locally grown flour is in Havli Mass. There's no one in Rhode Island, that's why you can't have 100%. That's where, I think, the 51% health might be. There are some things just not grown in Rhode Island.
I know there's some in Vermont that grow wheat, but you're talking 300 miles.
Yeah, yeah.
There's not enough land here, it's not economically feasible here.
Cheeses and sauce and beans, maybe?
I know there's people that make cheese here.
So farm, I believe.
Some of the acres, they do breads and stuff, so women, they do, so 51% is possible, but we're all...
Probably everything's possible except the wheat.
Yeah.
Is that what the menu is? Just they're making pizzas? Is that what the menu is? They're looking to make pizza?
I don't know what your menu is.
Yeah, that was our main focus, was essentially a pizza oven with some salads and stuff. That's sort of how this whole thing started, was essentially being able to do a pizza oven.
Something like a pub menu with someone sitting there drinking a beer.
Yeah, pizza, then, then you have salads and things like that.
Any other questions from anybody in your names? Any questions from...
I have... Go, Cal.
Well, my question to Bill is, Bill, this proposal tonight for a farm cafe is not a typical of those uses listed in the use table. Is it something rather out of the ordinary, which is cause due? Well, I mean, I, you know, I'm trying to, I don't know the answer to the question. I'm never supposed to ask unless I know the answer. But when it suggested that these items need years of peace, I don't think this is accurate. Do you find that that is true, that you need a year to work on some of the issues like the one Dan has raised?
Not only misinformed that it's incredibly inaccurate, I'm going to give you a reason.
And I thank you for speaking to us.
January 1, when the Rhode Island General Law changed...
Of this year.
Of this year.
Which is where you're reacting to.
We changed an entire zoning ordinance and land development regulations within two or three months. Remember one thing, it's still zoned residential, regardless of, you know, claims of, you know, subordinates, the farmer, and taking rights away. The map, this is not normal. Farm cafe is not, go look at it throughout the scene. It's not something that's a by right use within a residential zone. So the amount of work that was necessary to put this together, to get a learned operation, to protect the citizens of Exeter, not, not from the applicant, we talked about that.
Not from this, not from wherever.
It's from the person up the street that decides to say, you know what? I'm technically a farm, and I want to sell, you know, burgers and this. So really, it's about the energy spent on a particular item that required that much time versus something that's been in our zoning use table since 1964. Two different things.
Thank you. One more time, Asa.
All right, so I've got a question then. For all of the special uses that are changing to ends, how many are there?
I don't know, you can count here.
I don't know. If it's not 200, is it 10 or...? And I agree, they probably shouldn't take a year because they have been used before. But it's also not a trivial exercise. We're probably talking years, we're not talking months.
My only comment is I think that the widespread, the sweeping legislation that was adopted in January is not trivial or whatever its reference. This is huge, from what I have understood, from talking not only to you, but to other people. This is, this is huge.
Right, this is, I know it's tempting, the level of frustration, but remember this, is cast upon us by state law. No one asked for this. So if a special use criteria is changed from a yes or a no, or a kept as S, that could have 10 pieces of criteria associated with it. Now, my plan is, you know, ridiculous is to say 220 years. I take offense to that, or even a year. I think, I think logical people could understand that you can categorize some of these and then apply 10 or 15 per category that could apply to each one, right? So take the 220 years off the table. I don't know if it's a year, I don't know what it is because I'm being honest with you. But I know what you have now, and that is, every one of those right now are yeses. I challenge everyone to look at a special use permit, they're all yeses. If you decide that all your special use permits are yeses, you need not do anything tonight, okay? And that's my final word, and I'm not going to go back and forth, but these are...
Make it a yes, Bill, what was it?
If they say special use permits, they're permitted by right today. And tomorrow, when I go in that office, someone comes in, every one of those are uses. So if you want to keep it the same, that's fine. Just remember that they're all permitted by right now, which is, you know, totally up to the town. Just try and to react. Now, I don't know a town in the state of Rhode Island that has just said, you know, keep all the special use permits and we won't put any criteria. They either chose to, I think Richmond chose to place a no's and put some time into creating criteria. Because this is a false narrative that I hear tonight, and that's like, we can't do both. We've done everything, we've had a comprehensive plan that we can have in 15 years. We had state law with land development, zoning, and comprehensive plan that we achieved, right? We only achieve something when everyone's not happy. So we're going to either, as a town, decide to work through this and put aside the ridiculous claims of time, or you keep what you have, which is fine. And that will give carte blanche on all the special usage permits to be yes by right.
Excuse me, when you say it's fine, I believe that's what I call a tongue-in-cheek comment. I don't think you think it's fine.
No, it isn't, because ultimately, you're elected by the people of this town. And the people of the town was thrust upon with state law the ability to say, hey, if we have to take special use permits, we have to give a criteria. And if we don't want to address that because we think it's going to take too long or we're not going to go down that road, your choices to open it up and then make some people really happy that all these special use permits are now yeses. And it's absolutely up to the council, and if they want to keep them yeses, you'll have yeses. As of tomorrow, as of tomorrow.
Well, I need to think differently than my colleagues here. I sat here when we had no zoning ordinance in this town, and we reaped what were not benefits. So I saw that. Now, of course, we've come a long way, and now we're going in a direction that the state would like to take us as, and I'm concerned about that.
Sure, as I am, and that's why I'm here. And yes, there's pain in between, but the choice is not a no set against, you know, the pain that it takes to get from a no to a special use permit and just to keep things as is, which is essentially yeses, which is absolutely on the table. You know, you certainly, you know, can go in that direction and hope for the best. I mean, if hope for the best is a plan, then...
That's what Exeter normally does.
Bill, do you have developed reaching out to you on a routine basis?
All the time.
Excuse me?
All the time. I have special use permits that would be considered special use permits on Route 3 and Route 2 all the time, that, you know... And again, just something else that was said tonight, which is, again, I need to correct for the record. If you have an existing use, who wants to take that use away? It's for new permitted uses and for a period of time. So I know sometimes throwing color out there is insinuating, you know, to try to, you know, induce panic. But I don't think it's fear to what the facts say. And, you know, the other direction besides, you know, the claim of taking rights away is you're giving away everything that the town has for all this time and tried to at least regulate some uses. So, you know, you have an either-or, or something down the middle.
Thank you, Bill.
I've got three I need to make.
Real quick, and then Mr. Radcliffe, please.
Okay, first, regarding ethics, line 19, gift shops in RU4. Dan, you might want to recuse yourself from that one. Olivia, on the woodworking one, number 41, you may want to recuse yourself because that's changing to a yes based on your family's business on your property. Mr. De Pasquale on lines 71, I'm sorry, 72, 73, 74, 75, C. There are a number of special uses that stay as S. Is that intentional, or is that because this is still a work in process? Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, 70, I'm sorry.
72, 73, 74.
Oh, so...
75, C.
No, you, so, thank you, Ms. Davis. So Mr. Davis brings out the point that small-scale solar, medium-scale solar, large-scale solar, utility-scale solar, none of those would change. No, they were not changed.
Because you already have the criteria for those?
You partially have criteria. I think it should be bolstered, but you do have some criteria. Not perfect, but you do have some level of addressing that, but that is not perfect.
Oh, so 75C, the medical marijuana?
C, medical.
C is non-residential cooperative cultivation?
Yeah, I think that's state law, I don't...
That's part of medical...
Yeah, I, no, I may have dismissed that. Non-residential cooperative cultivation. It probably should be... C, 75C, not really that, but I'm seeing on that. I guess those are the two districts, that's a zoning, a village district, and the other one's like a... Village district. I think the other one is a groundwater overlay district. So, I mean, I don't know what the purpose is. Called a non-groundwater, it's really not applicable for groundwater overlay. And a PVOD, which is the, we don't have one, it's a village district. So I suppose you...
It's an SBL, over.
It's an overlay, it's groundwater, has nothing to do with land use. It's just, you know, it wouldn't for environmental reasons, like you wouldn't want to put junk out over that. But yeah, that's probably an oversight on my behalf, Mr. Davis.
Can I ask a question, please?
Mr. Radcliffe, please next.
I just, very quickly, I don't want to take up too much more time. I just wanted to say that my comments here tonight were not intended to be incendiary. They were intended to be factual. There have been 220 pages to the use table, not line items, as I might have said, but the actual changes, right? I understand that we have a part-time planner who clearly did a wonderful job on this. I'm not doubting that for a second, you can see the detail that went into it. I also heard, as a fact stated earlier at the meeting, that there's been one instance in the five months that this law has been in effect where somebody has come through and gotten a yes because of the way the law changed under a special use permit process that otherwise would have been in place. So I would again just urge the council to consider taking one more month to just take the time to figure out what needs to move to a yes from a no, or a no to a yes, or to develop specific criteria for things that should stay a special use permit.
Any other questions from the council?
Oh, I just have one question for Bill. If the cold storage area is so big, and most cold storage is off the actual kitchen, if maybe that could be just changed?
Through the president, I have no objection. Cold storage or refrigeration, yeah, typically they're add-ons, so I don't have an objection to that. If you want to change that, I'm going to strike that. I have no objection.
Would that be asked just to leave that off?
Yeah, I can strike it.
I think I, I think I did a, I find a right paper, I did a swipe through that.
Just starting out the...
What I did right there, and a refrigerator specifically, I just passed out four other cold storage.
Well, I think if you leave it like this, then any room that has a refrigerator in it would qualify now.
Yeah, I would take out the refrigerator.
I think I would stretch from the word and, yeah.
Oh, yes, okay.
Does that make sense?
I'm going to make a motion to court public hearing.
I'll move.
Say it.
All okay, then? I'm going to make a motion in light of this, and this is going to be a long one here. And I'm going to move to accept, move to accept an act in proportion to the planning board's recommendation that relates to farm breweries and farm cafes specifically in section 1.2. Definitions, numbers 34, 35, 35A, and 35G. And in section 2.4, zoning use table, number 60, 60A, 60B, 15. I'm also going to include the change in the language in section 35B in definitions. Was there one more thing in here that we had in this room? Or just that one, just that one sentence?
The refrigeration.
The licensing.
Oh, and also the licensing and requirements required in the farm brewery definition. You want me to read that into the record, Bill? Okay. You're going to have fun, I'll let you just... Another stipulation under the farm brewery section will be a farm cafe must submit an annual report to the town council, planning board, and town planner as part of its required annual application... as part of its required annual application. Section 18-162 would be extra code ordinances. The second part of this is to reject the remaining changes without prejudice and request that the planner and planning board resubmit these separately for consideration in the next 30 days.
I think 30 is like...
It's, I mean, I want to try and meet up with Bill tomorrow because it's going to rain and I can go through my concerns with it.
Like 30 days is putting him under the gun.
All right, you need to finish the motion, make a second way of discussion.
No, okay, second.
Second.
Okay, got you.
That was the end of the motion.
Or should I make this motion to where everybody get their concerns? I'm sorry.
Was that the end of the motion? You said number two, reject the remaining changes. Is that the end of the motion?
Oh, no, I said without prejudice and request that the planning and planning board resubmit separately for consideration at a future meeting. Probably going to change this. Would it be easier if everybody put their concerns, go through this, all five of us, and submit them to Bill in the next week or two? The council, instead of going through the planning, send it back to the planning board? We can do this next month?
I think we can ask Bill to reconsider the why's to an S or the ends to an A.
That's what I'm saying, it's been so much to go through in the last two weeks.
Yeah, let me finish, but I don't, let me finish. But I don't think he's going to be able to create all the specific criteria for a dozen or 15 or 20 that he may receive from us. I don't think there's time for that. I would rather, if we're not going to, if we're not going to shut it down tonight the way it was recommended, then I think we should at least do 60 days.
I didn't hear what you last word.
I said, if we're not going to approve what was presented tonight to be revisited, as I suggested, in three months, or six, but three. If we're not going to do that, then I think we should do at least 60 days to come back. I don't know if Bill feels that's reasonable.
Is that for council to give him there?
Well, yeah. I think he should cut them within 30 days and we come back in 60 days.
Well, are we required to go back to the planning board?
No, that's what I'm saying, all five of us go through this with your notes and concerns and give us your bill, and we can...
Yeah.
Bill, do you have anything to say?
Do we have to go back to the planning board?
Yes, so, right, so because this is coming through from the planning board, you only get a chance to vote on it one time. So if you want to approve half of it and not deal with half of it tonight, then it's got to start that process over. It's going to have to go back to the planning board, um, either with whatever, you know, changes that Bill makes or exactly as it is today, just resubmit it so you can have it separately from the farm cafe stuff. That way you can vote on it at a separate meeting without tying everything together.
But if we tied everything together tonight, took our 60 days, did exactly what you're asking us to do, and then have that, like, send it...
60 days, come back to it.
Yeah, and then we can change the...
Yeah, that's, all right, so I'll change the motion from 30 days to 60 days at work.
At work? I, I don't, is that, I don't think that's what you're saying.
No, I said pass it as is.
We need a doctor and come back in 60 days and revise, as you may.
Because it's not taking anything, like, it's really just a temporary pause. And then we can go through without Bill having to fight off people every day or fearing that when he goes, comes into work the three days a week that he is going to be besieged with things. Because it is a concern and it is a weight that hangs over his head. That's just my two cents.
I almost thought, I mean, we got two paths in which to go and, you know, it's, you know, I'm going to work within the timeframe. I was going to say that 30 days don't work because I got to get it on the planning board agenda.
With the 60, 60 would be...
Well, that's at minimum, like, I have, I'll put the criteria together, I'll cobble something together, I'll work whatever I need to work, weekends or whatever. Still got to get in front of the planning board, so the question would be, the motion that's on the table doesn't adopt this. So in the meantime, you got 60 days for people to apply. Again, that has nothing to do with me. Um, just remember when people come in on that time, what could possibly happen. Um, but I'll work whatever timeframe you give me. I don't have a choice.
I'll end my motion to 60 days. I'll try and meet with you tomorrow because it's going to be raining, so I'll be in my office to see, I can go through mine real quick.
Is everyone going to get me the information or just...
If everybody has any concerns on anything in there, just give it to Bill this week, whatever, because you have wood crossing. So, it's, I don't know if anybody else had anything.
Yeah.
This week? Yeah, Wednesday and coming up.
My concern is only...
Well, we're not going to meet, we're going to...
No, I understand.
Don't. So we'll leave it at that, that way you can get together, write it down, and go through it, so. That's my motion. Do we have a second? We have a second to discuss.
Well, I believe your motion drops only a portion tonight and leaves the others open. I don't, I can't vote for that, I'm sorry.
Leaving the second part the way it is, no.
Phil, you want to take a roll call vote?
No, what?
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Dan?
Aye.
Ray?
No.
Diane?
Aye.
Olivia?
No.
And Cal?
No.
Sales?
I would consider a different motion.
Excuse me?
I said I would consider a different motion.
So Dan's motion failed.
Okay.
I understand, so if you'd like to propose something else.
Go ahead, Cal, you want to propose?
No, well, what I'm saying is that we adopt what's in front of us tonight, but we set the 60, then we ask for a 60-day review to come back to us in June, July. If you want to do July, it's a August, but two months anyway.
Do July. You want to do that motion? Or you want me to read it again or just...
Well, I want it to make sense.
Okay.
And perhaps legal counsel and Lynn collectively can make that motion make sense.
Sure, it sounds like you want to approve all of the planning board's recommendations subject to the little alterations that have been made over courses of hearing.
Yes, subject to these changes that have been made here at the hearing.
So that, so it would approve everything, and you want it to be put back on the agenda in July for review, um, at which time you could then, you know, if there's stuff you want to change, you could then notice a public hearing for deciding whether, uh, change thereafter.
Yes.
That's my suggestion.
Okay.
That's the motion.
Is I make that motion?
That's your motion, Cal, okay, that was second? That was the second, right?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you wish to do a roll call by vote.
That's fine.
Or if you hear five ayes.
Okay.
Uh, Bill, thank you for this.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Number eight is public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, no, we did close the public comment, yeah. We did close it, okay. Yeah, close the public comment and vote on it.
Yes. Lynn, would you directive action over here potentially?
We closed the public hearing, we voted on that, yeah.
Did we vote? We did.
Maybe we voted on it, yeah. The only one for public comment is Asa Davis.
Asa Davis, 146 Beechfield Trail. I was excluded from the April 7 meeting and ejected from the 414 for no lawyer, so some of these are a little old.
Wait, that, wait, 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 I couldn't hear you two. Could you come up?
Shh.
People need to come up towards the, so we can hear what you're going to address.
But there was a lot of background noise.
Yeah. But go ahead, Asa.
Ready?
You're ready, action.
Asa Davis, 146 Beechfield Trail. I was excluded from the April 7 meeting and ejected from the 414 for no lawyer, so some of these are a little old. Nice to see Cal in court. Good for the council to see where our legal problems go. Thanks to Rob Chaffey for moving baggage, I appreciate it. It's a nice example of good things happening when two sides work together. Not all smooth sailing yet. Drive links back to be barrier condition, 911 mailbox back up. Still way behind on fire breaks in trails. Taking much longer than planned because barrier was forced to use the screen crossing over the Tenra Road. Lord said he couldn't use a state six months after the injunction expired. One silver lining using that, that helped expose the DDM and zoning runoff violations of the new town hall. Stay who? Morgan, other town personnel, legal counsel, and even neighbors were claiming the injunction was still in effect until March 21st. That's 822 days of illegal enforcement, but keeping somebody in jail tripled their sentence. In January, my survey crew was told they couldn't park on a state and had to leave. This violates 5-3.1-21 from Superior and Surveyors. On 3/15, the state police were called as I was clearing deadfall from my driveway. No crime involved, says the report. Town lawyers were up to the same thing. Site poll in October 2024 said the injunction was still in full force in effect before my planning board denied it. Sylvia's March 6 Supreme Court filings said or implied a dozen times the injunction was still in effect. Regarding April 7, I saw the video and have this to say. Mr. Nelson, it's not town property. The town said it never accepted through both official affidavits and town solicitor filings. The Supreme Court agreed, stating that there was no acceptance of the land passed the Culbessac. If there's no acceptance, it's not town land. I know what the maps show. The town and courts say differently, and maps need to change. Mr. Stryker, the 2021 date is wrong. I bought my land May 23, 1997, Book 103, page 60, seven months after the Exeter Village Plan approval. That was 116 days before Bob Anderson bought his lot, built his house. That was a year and a half before the Harris bought his lot and built his house. That was years before I Mitchell invasion. Except for the Padua, I bought before anyone in Exeter Village. I watched trucks and machines come in and build all the houses, and I put up with all the temporary dust and noise. Years. You got served because the town in the first case filed for dismissal for not including indispensable parties, i.e. you. You don't have to spend money on legal fees. You can do what Assalone and Wood Estates did, this came interest for him to get a lot. Harris, as he mentioned, estate driveway that first rode in. When he was turning left for Sarah to get to his lot, I was turning right to get to mine. He wasn't the first to buy, I was. Maybe he didn't notice, just like I didn't notice him at the time either. Doesn't mean it didn't happen.
Okay, Asa, you have three minutes. Thank you. Next, under new business, number nine, solid-based recycling services agreement between Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation and Town of Exeter. Have you, Rob?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's really for your signatures at this time.
The motion to enter into this agreement?
Right.
I'll make a motion to enter into the agreement between Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation and Town of Exeter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item B is fire remediation status, seven from the Tenra Road.
That, I did, Dan, because I had a question from a resident here with a free throw that comes out and says, why, thank you, Bill, why is this structure still in place? I obviously don't have an answer. But I put it here on the agenda to see if we could make, I don't know, some sort of inquiries about why do things not... Did you do it, right, Lynn?
An email, but not to the owners.
Oh.
To one of our inspectors.
Okay. Well, but my concern, you know, I don't have an answer for the person who said, why is the building stand? I don't know. Uh, it should be addressed. I'm sorry to see its condition. I remember it's a beautiful farmhouse with a porch and lovely, but it's, that's long gone. So I wonder if the fire company was thinking and using it as a, you know, a training?
I'm allowed to do, well, to do it. I worked in Rhode Island building, they have to get DCM, air quality, permits and everything else.
Do we, do we, let me ask you this. Probably not in my lifetime, but in your lifetime, do you expect you'll just see it probably and nothing? I mean, it's...
Is it foreclosure or something?
Rather, I saw, and I just didn't have an answer for the resident who said, why is this along our beautiful scenic highway where there's going to be a parade on Sunday, the 25th of May? No, I just want to get it right myself, Diane. And I said, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer. I said, but let me put it on the agenda just to see if anyone does. So I guess we don't.
How long has it been like that, Tom, you know?
I think it's been...
Two years, three years, four years.
Is it that long? Probably.
A car rolled into it.
Yeah, it was a sad story.
Manny Andrews was on the council when I had it.
I think, I haven't actually seen it from the top of the...
Maybe he was representing the owners too.
Oh.
Not the owners, no, the tenant, the tenant.
Can, can you suggest that there's any reach out that you can do to the owner or anything?
Well, so, the only thing that comes to mind, I'll leave the reaching out, I think, to Lynn, but if, if the property's been abandoned, which is kind of what it sounds like you're describing, there's, there's statutory process for dealing with nuisance properties that have been abandoned like that, or that are in such a condition that they're a public nuisance.
Right, but, okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but right next door is a facility that's being used, well, I mean, almost every day, so I believe the same person owns that property. I don't know, I think so. But, I mean, it just seems like we should at least address something to the owner of the property indicating that we wish that corrective action could be taken. You know, I mean, I'm just talking about a letter from our attorney that says, you know, it's been a discussed at our council meeting and we just wish that we could have some resolution. How long is it going to sit there? All right, never mind. That's my thought.
We can buy the building.
I don't want to buy the building. I can't buy it. So, anyway, well, just for discussion.
Out of the box.
All right, Dan, for discussion, I move that we direct our legal counsel to write a letter of petition, so to speak, to the owner, to the owner asking that the property be, I mean, the address, if the fire-damaged property be addressed, leveled, removed. Something to that effect.
I can remember where it was, a furniture store.
No, I remember before, with the library, I loved your presidency. Is there a second, though? Maybe this is...
I have a second right here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay, next up, Town of Exeter Resolution number 2025-004 in support of amendments to Rhode Island General Law 16-21.11 ET SEQ regarding funding of student transportation. That was you, Cal, because that was...
Well, yes, you remember, this was, this was the product of several pieces of communication. And I took the one that was the most generic, that didn't make specific references to cost, but speaks to the fact that this, these transportation costs should be covered. And I do know here that Lynn has indicated it would be sent to important people, but particularly our own school, you know, our own school department because they should see that we took this action. So I move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Um, you'll see that you have a second page in your file because somehow the second page ended up on lead head and you couldn't read it.
But it's all good.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, next is request for proposals, impact fees study and ordinance review update, expansion, update the RFP authorized by the Town Council vote, totally worth it, 10, 2025. For the question, Town Council meeting to update scope to include an addendum to update Article 3 of the Growth Management Ordinance. You're okay.
Oh, I read about it because Bill recommended that. I sent it to Ken and Lynn to discuss it because we wanted to work on the impact fees. Talked to Bill later once we found the growth management study and showed him what that was, that, um, he agreed. He, he agreed because no one knew where it was, Patty found it and it got up. Uh, but it's already 10 years old and Bill agreed that it would be a separate thing from the impact fees. So it wouldn't be combined.
Do it separately from?
Separately.
So that's all we got to do, just keep in front for old business next month, though.
Yeah, and so if you want to talk about this tomorrow night on the budget to see how much money you're going to pay to update the growth management. much money you're gonna pay to update the growth management impact.
Okay, but it has been posted, uh, right, April tenth, it says, it was posted.
Yeah, the impact fees.
Right, but, but, well, I thought this, this affidavit meant that they, they, what was posted?
Well, you just said we're not gonna.
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna buy them.
So we don't have to do anything with the RFP?
No, just come tomorrow night and we talk about, if you wanna do the growth management study, it's gonna cost some money.
No, I had questions about that.
It'll be pretty complicated, this study.
Okay. Next is E, Department of Emergency Management request for contractual transfer of generator responsibility to Exeter EMA to Exeter EMS.
Yeah, well, we have a, we have a communication from her, uh, what are they doing? Well, she indicates that next door, we've been paying for the generator that's actually next door. So her recommendation is that we let them know.
So we were paying, when Stefan was here, and he had the space there, and we bought the generator, but he was paying for the service contract for them to let him use the office, kind of rental.
Yeah.
We were paying the contract with rental fee, but, um, Dory's been.
Ousted from the space.
I wouldn't wanna say that, but.
Oh, well, I mean, she's not longer there, but out of her own free will.
No, no.
She didn't walk away.
So she doesn't, she has, I don't know.
I do have a question to that, um, because how long was Stefan in that space? Seven years or plus, something like that? And, and all of a sudden, there was a conflict between two people, um, that I don't believe that person came to council and got some guidance on handling that situation. So we just forfeited that space for, say, the EMA director that had a nice space that she now does not have a space, and now this is like codified, it's gonna be permanent, because you do have a deal that we pay for five hundred dollars a year for the service for that generator, and it kept that space, but I don't know if it was public works, and I would've said, I'm done with my office, and I'm not, just all of a sudden, I'm, I'm out of my office because I had a dispute with someone.
Well, here's the other national works. New state police might possibly be looking for a room, which we've read that memorandum.
But they've taken it over themselves. They've, you, they're using it. Somebody wanted that, somebody wanted that office.
They needed the space.
Over there, there.
It was someone from the fire district that approached me, wanted to put the state police back in.
But I know, but I'm saying what happened, that, that's changed, you know? Before, when she got ousted, that was the story, but maybe since then, they've changed their mind.
We can send them a letter saying we're no longer responsible for the annual maintenance contract under generator.
Yeah.
I think that, because how old is it?
I don't know.
So it's getting ready to break.
It's a few years old.
And then no more.
Twenty-ten, I think, twenty-fifteen?
Huh? Deagle?
Yeah, it's a.
No, it's a Generac, it's probably natural gas.
So is that a more appropriate gas?
Point of information, do you know roughly what we pay for that, Ian?
I think, uh, I think it was through a grant.
So it was purchased.
Right, but I mean, there's no con, is there any contract, annual, annual agents?
That's what we're paying.
Well, I know, does it, do you know how much?
Stefan got a grant and bought them a generator.
Oh, down here, four hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Because he would need it if there was an emergency.
Well, here it is on this.
He's able to. Yeah.
Four ninety-five.
I'll make a motion that we no longer pay the maintenance contract at the EMS, so we can send them a letter telling them, they're under oath.
Second.
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye. Next up.
Uh, memorandum and understanding, of understanding between Rhode Island State Police and the Town of Exeter. I'm sure you want to talk.
Uh, so I can, I think you missed F, though.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll be back. Department of Emergency Management request for authorization to hire a URI college student intern to develop a chat G P D four point two program for emergency management document analysis.
Yeah, I think, I think the way that we can do this is that we can, uh, grant you the authority to go ahead once funding is available. There's money coming forward, I believe, through the budget after July first, if it's approved.
So she, she has.
She still has money.
She has money in the budget.
She still has money now to pay for that.
Or to pay for a certain number of hours, uh, she's towards the same.
Yeah, if she stays within her budget and within the purchasing procurement policies that are set forth, then.
Yeah, 'cause they didn't use any of the money for the assistance this year? Or did she?
No, no, uh, no, not that I, not that I would.
So there's money to pay for it now, 'cause she probably wants to see someone there in June, not really till July first.
Correct, I think she'd like to start now, and then continue within the budget, if money, you know, if her budget allows.
All right, can I make a motion?
Well, no, I mean, Maria mentioned her specific, you know, procurement approach policy or what have you, so I would say that my motion will be to authorize, uh, Dory to engage the services of students as she wishes through the procurement policy we have in place, using the funds, I mean, if you want, you know, using funds currently.
Within her budget.
Within her budget is fine, within her budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is memorandum of understanding between Rhode Island State Police and the Town of Exeter.
Uh, so I reviewed this, uh, some time ago and sent some comments off, uh, to, uh, to the council, um, about, uh, some issues that I, you know, that I see with the, the language of the contract. Um, my understanding is that this has been more or less what we've had for, for quite a while, so it's not anything really new here. Um, there are some risks associated with the structure of it, um, but, you know, whether it seems likely that any of that's, that'll change right now, um, especially considering we've had this for a few months, um, and I'm not, you know, I'm not sure that we're in a great position to try to change it today. Um, you know, that's something certainly to consider, but if anybody has any questions about any of the, the, uh, the, the comments, I'd have to get into them, but.
Was anything particularly alarming to you?
Uh, the, the thing that I like about it the least is it's structured in such a way that either party has the ability to kind of walk away from it on relatively short notice, which isn't such a big deal for, you know, if the town decides to walk away, I don't think the state police is gonna really care very much, but if the state police decides, hey, you know, thirty days from now, we're not providing policing coverage anymore, how likely that is, I'm not saying it's very likely, but they, they have that power. Um, you know, it's not like the town has the ability to just establish a police department in that time period, so it does, it does leave you open to that sort of issue, but that doesn't seem likely.
I, I think it's been that way, probably from the outset, because we were always told that if they didn't have enough staff, they just maybe couldn't offer us the coverage. I mean, I've, I've worked on this one and one, kind of gone over all the language, but it's finally come to fruition. Dan, thank you for, for continuing.
Well, the first one was Jimmy Manny that reached out to us.
Yeah, but I, you know, one before that.
This is why I went to the governor of the state of the states, actually, to try and, and so.
Good.
And a day and a half later, he had, well, now he's a major, Ronnie Long, who's he up contact? He was not like two weeks.
Originally, tax payers voted against having any, any coverage, and the argument was they come anyway, which I always thought was, let's engage them, and it's a way also to show, I would rather spend this than the million made to save.
I'll just give him some feedback.
You know where I'm going with that.
Yep.
Thank you.
And we look at this figure, the figures here adding up to the three years.
Is there a?
That was probably, Frank Moore was on the council, and Peter Wondos sent us an itemized bill per call for four hundred fifty thousand dollars for one year.
We don't like that.
Pretty neat.
We thought this was a good idea.
And D O A up there, because the guy told us they were gonna take all our state aid. He had buried it in the budget, and we'd be even in his own game, so, you know.
Yeah, there's a history here, it's not a little, no, probably, so.
So basically, Frank Moore actually had to do an open records request to get a list of these calls. Over seventy percent of them are on state highways. The book was that thick. So it, it comes down to the voters, the financial town meeting approving itself, and, uh, I don't have any issues with it, I know you would, you, a lawyer wrote it, a lawyer read it, so.
The only, the only, I don't know if it's even an issue, but it just says, Rhode Island State Police will assign two troopers to the town for the purposes of providing twenty-four hour law enforcement. It seems that they only do state law, like they're not interested.
They won't do local ordinances, no, they won't get called, or, yeah.
Well, I know, but obviously.
Because they tell, they tell the general public to call me.
Yeah, and the point of what we made is.
You have a lot of authority, right?
It's only state and, you know.
Well, what, uh, the way it was originally set up is during the day, there's one, they do twelve-hour shifts, twelve or thirteen-hour shifts, they overlap, they'll take something like that.
Well, the, the last call I was on, it took them two hours to get there.
They might've done it on purpose or something.
Well, maybe, but I've been down the calls where it takes a while.
But they tried.
And they still call me to, to do things, because they don't have anybody available.
It's supposed to be one trooper during the day and one at night.
One at night, right.
Well, I called, state police are two in the morning, and two, two guys showed up.
That's because they probably didn't have anything.
They probably didn't have anything else to do.
They didn't have anything else to go on.
It was the toll shop.
I know, Route two, they're, they're on Route two all the time.
They are.
They're, they're now red patrolling all the time.
Yeah, museum.
Now, I'm sure they're on three, if you're in the town.
One sixty-five.
Yeah, they are.
They seem to be here on one oh two, but that's all right.
I see oh two yesterday.
As long as it's somewhere, yeah, no, as long as it's somewhere, that's good.
Because the best part was last week, trucks log was sitting in my parking lot.
Who, what?
The, the ones that inspect the heavy trucks and gives them the dollars and fines.
Oh, okay, okay. Anyway, move that we accept this subject to approval at the financial town meeting?
That's a motion, Cal.
I will make that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business solicitors license application, Griffin Gooden, Michael Trevasoni, Daniel West, Scott Taylor, Matthew McGuire, Robert O'Neil, Joseph Sorrelli, I don't have that on this, applicants power home remodeling transit Rhode Island door-to-door, three estimates windows roofing siding, is that you?
It is.
Which one are you?
Scott Taylor.
Did they give you any paperwork? You're not the one I talked to on the phone Friday, are you?
No, that was Ray.
We have an email from Patty.
But this is what we.
I brought hard copies of what Ray emailed us.
Okay.
Is this something different that we have?
There you go. Okay. I did talk to him, I told him to give us the information, so. We should now need a motion to grant a solicitor's license to, I might as well use the gentleman's name. You guys are just doing sales, you're not doing contracts at the house, correct? That's the discussion I had.
What we're applying for, my team, we don't do any sales, we're just making appointments.
Okay.
They're, they're the solicitors, though.
What's that?
They're the solicitors for the license.
Oh. Solicitors license application, so it's gonna be to Griffin Gooden, Michael Trevasoni, is that how you say it?
Correct.
Daniel West, Scott Taylor, if that's, did I pronounce your name right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Matthew McGuire, Robert O'Neil Junior, Joseph Chiarrello, did I do that right?
Chiarrello.
Round close. Applicants power home remodeling transit Rhode Island door-to-door sales at three estimates windows roofing siding.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're all set, so, thank you.
Ooh, you know, when, like, um, so didn't, license is available? Okay.
It's worth the wait.
Sorry.
Huh? Yeah.
We waited a long time.
Sorry for the wait.
No worries.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
B.
Status, multiply. Watch out for, watch out for dogs.
I just gotta ask him how, how he, is he not.
He doesn't care right now.
No, all right, that's fine. I was just curious.
He has cared earlier.
Well, I'm just curious, actually. I live here, I don't know what's coming, it might be right two o'clock in the morning.
I don't know what did the paperwork have already come? Uh, status, welcome signage in Mount Town?
I'm gonna, gonna, gonna lead on a new sign company, that's what I'm probably doing. Signs, I think they seem, so.
Oh, and Mount is, yeah, was he the one you were working with? No.
Someone else.
Oh.
So what did you say? You got a new sign company?
Yeah.
What happened to the old one?
He never responded, because I think he's just stickers. And we don't want.
He's a yard star.
Oh, stickers.
Yeah, no, he's a, if you go to the coffee, I could go up there.
They're just, they're nice, all over. They're not black, as someone's requested.
Well, can't somebody paint them black?
Well, they, someone was, uh, welcome to Exeter. We could have a little Mercy Brown thing going on.
Little vampire?
Yeah, I'm just kidding, I'm kidding. But Lynn thinks it should be classy, we have classy signs, we have classy signs.
You want black, I, you want white?
Well, no, I just.
I just wanted to say, come again.
I know, he's so much.
I want it to match all the other signs.
Thank you, well, so does, so does Lynn.
It means it doesn't have to be exact, but it should feel like it's in the same family.
Sure.
Okay. That's what we're waiting for, keep that on, all right?
Well, and we also didn't budget for it either, so I don't know.
We didn't budget for any signs. Would you have a council, you know, contingency, if we decide, we finally get something, we can use.
Did we get an approval from D O T?
No.
No, yeah, but.
Ah, we don't need that.
Two years later.
They're all.
Well, we also putting signs up down there, so.
Yeah. Let us join in.
Okay, we'll keep it on that. Uh, next is status, Rhode Island two fifty commission, Exeter Historic Preservation Commission.
Uh, no, I only know that they, there were people, I, I was supposed to go up and I stood up, there were people up there at the library on Saturday, and they were promoting, and, would you go up there?
I did go up there.
I heard someone that was there.
I did, I sat in the booth.
Sat in the two fifty?
I did.
Oh, it's because SIS is quite engaged, you know, but I mean, I get it.
They're just trying to raise money still, so they can have some kind of celebration.
All right, we'll leave that one. E, town government buildings uses improvement plan, six seventy-five, ten run road, basic water mitigation.
We can take this off.
I just gotta ask you, based on trying?
Oh, but wait, that's what I want to know, it's been raining.
Yes, it is, it's dry, even the water will.
Black drat, you know?
It's dry, yeah, it's down there a few times.
Motion to remove that item.
Um, they did a great job, they really did, they were conscientious, professional, courteous, um, they cleaned, they really cleaned up their mess.
Nice.
Really nice, really nice.
But noisy.
I was gonna say.
But, you know.
Motion to remove.[1707.21] Motion to remove.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, last one.
Seven forty-two, ten run road, status, architectural services.
I have, um, Ken's comments, Mike comments, I don't really have what, um, I'm just gonna send them to Mr. Azarano, who was operated on and will be out for two weeks at ankle operation, so he won't be available for, at least. It's ankle, so he could probably lay and read comments and perhaps, so maybe a week or so.
Was he skiing or drinking?
This is gonna hold, I think, from both.
But this has got to be ultimately to bring us something that we can review, but not necessarily take to review, so, I mean, thank you.
Thank you. Number eleven, uh, communications, you had number one and eleven, Cal.
Oh, we already did, maybe, uh, yeah, one, one, yeah, I'm sorry, one.
Don't they start at the same meeting?
No, no, uh, one, one is a, uh, I, I read it and it says, maybe we're not interested in it, uh, I, maybe, but maybe we should really pass it. They wanna come and present to us, but maybe they really ought to talk to the planner, and my, my, my recommendation would be that we forward this communication to, uh, the planner, please. I'm not asking you to do any, just for him to look at it, just.
You want me to review it?
Yeah, to see, oh, to see if he has any recommendations for.
Yeah, but you know him, he's gonna write a four-page.
No, 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 well, no, he, hopefully, he'll say, no, we don't need to pursue that, but, but, oh, wait, I was gonna, no, I was gonna have it also forwarded to Maria, because it's something about, did you see it? No, all right, to two people, the money person and the planner. If I, do we need a motion on that, or just do it?
Just do it.
Just do it.
What is it?
Your word.
Tell him your money.
This, this may be, well, they're asking for a letter of support from Verizon, and first it looked like we missed the deadline, but then I saw a revision that said, well, could you do it tonight? Did you see this?
Yep.
Did you all see this?
Yes.
Is that, I thought we already did it, but we didn't do it, did we?
Didn't make it through yet.
Oh, well, it seems like unless there's something wrong here, and we try to expand broadband, it's not what this is. Motion for a letter of support for Verizon's application to Commerce, RI, Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program.
We did it once previously, several months ago, and then for some reason, they asked for a, a new letter, and that didn't make it into the agenda until last month, and so.
So I pulled it off as a communication, but maybe we can't do it, uh, unless, oh, see, we got the head shake.
Okay.
So, so we'll just ignore it, I guess, because it's, all right, that's it.
Yes, we're gonna ignore it, okay. We're gonna take a, motion to take your five minutes break before we go to executive session.
Uh, yeah, and, and before we move, I know, we're on break, I mean, we did the break, right? Second, second.
Favor, aye.
Aye.
Uh, Dan, I just want you to know, when we go into executive session, I've spoken a bit, and it's Bill, he's come and said with us on the issue of what's going on up here, and he said he'd be happy to listen, so why not? If he's left, but I don't think so.
We gotta sign.